Okay, first off, adoption of the minutes, looking for a motion. Moved by Council Morocco, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Next up, disclosures. Okay, disclosures of particular interest. Counselor Carrillo?
Worship on the BIA budget discussions and pass going to the BIA budget on the member of the budget, the BIA.
Okay. Any other? Counselor Wing, then Counselor Iannone?
The in-camera matter and by law 2011-97. My husband works for one of the stakeholders in at least one of the affected BIAs.
Okay. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you. The in-camera item, one of my children works for one of the stakeholders in the BIAs.
Okay. And then Counselor Carrillo?
And the in-camera matter as well, your worship. I excuse myself from that as well.
Okay. Are there any others? And I also have check number 346977 made out to myself. Okay, first, yes, we're gonna ask our CAO to start us off, please.
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to clarify tonight for council and for everybody in attendance, how we're gonna proceed with the first three items. The first three items are somewhat interrelated, and we believe we'd set them forward in this manner so that council could make decisions and proceed through all three reports in a sequential manner. So the first report that Mr. Allingham is gonna be coming forward and making a presentation on deals with the, lack of better words, the right-of-way that is being considered over the highway as part of our transportation master plan, and he'll be speaking to that issue. The second report deals with the declaration of surplus lands, which are surplus lands that form part of the development proposal on the Optimus Park lands. And the third report deals with the rezoning application for the Optimus Club lands. Now, the way we've set this up with council is so that council can deal with each of those reports separately tonight. The first report after hearing Mr. Allingham, council can deal with the issue of the right-of-way or the overpass over the highway. If council wishes to defer that item pending the completion of the transportation master plan that Mr. Allingham will be talking about, if council would like to have that item deferred, what staff is suggesting is that the other two items would be deferred tonight as well because they are related to one another in terms of how we deal with them. So I just wanted to alert council to that. Your decisions tonight are based in a sequential manner, so that if you're deferring that first report, we would suggest you defer the other two. If you want to make a decision after hearing Mr. Allingham tonight to proceed, then we'll proceed with all three reports. So, Mr. Mayor, hopefully that's clear on how we're gonna proceed on those.
Any questions of the counselors? Okay, then we'll start off with Mr. Allingham. We'll ask him to approach the microphone.
All right, your worship members of council, my name is Doug Allingham, and I'm Executive Vice President of AECOM Canada. We've been working on a transportation master plan with your staff and staff from the region and Ministry of Transportation now for about 18 months. We're in the final stages of that master plan, and what I'd like to do tonight is give you a very, very quick synopsis of what the master plan is all about and then talk a little bit about this particular issue, the Morrison Street flyover. So, as I said, I'm gonna give you a very quick background on what the master plan is all about and then tell you a little bit about the evaluation that we've done relative to new crossings of the QEW, QEW in particular. The master plan has included a significant public consultation process. We have conducted a citywide public attitudinal survey. We've had two public meetings to date, a third one to happen in the fall. We've had a steering committee and an advisory group that provides input throughout the course of the process, and we've had regular and constant input from the public during the course of our work. The master plan is a study which is looking at both existing and future year conditions, and we've looked all the way out to 2031 and in some cases beyond 2031. We've been using the Region of Niagara forecasting model to project future traffic volumes on the network based upon population and employment growth projections for the community. And the objective of the study in very simple terms was to develop, was to determine which elements of the infrastructure might be needed, if any, to address population and employment and visitation growth within the community. In producing the projections, I don't wanna go into a lot of details, but we did look at different scenarios for reductions in traffic volumes due to increases in transit ridership, travel demand management programs, looking at ways for people to travel at different times of the day and by different modes. So it's been a sustainable transportation master plan. To cut to the chase, we identified a number of deficiencies in the QEW area over the next, up until the year 2031. And what we found was there are a number of deficiencies that would require a new crossing of the QEW by 2031. And there's a list here of roadway links that would be operating at or in excess of capacity in 2031 without some sort of improvements. So if you look at the QEW, for example, you've got issues at Thorlstone Road, Lundys Lane, McCloud Road, and on parts of 420. So we believe there's an obvious need for another crossing or crossings of the QEW. And as part of the process, we identified five possible crossing alternatives, including a do-nothing scenario where we didn't provide any crossings and we looked at the impact of what that might have on the network. Our analysis revealed a capacity deficiency in the 2031 horizon year for crossing the QEW between Thorlstone Road and McCloud Road. So we told the staff, we think there needs to be another crossing of the QEW, and what we did was we came up with four alternatives in consultation with the steering committee and the staff and the public. We looked at Morrison Street. We looked at Dunn Street. We looked at widening McCloud Road. And we looked at a combination of improving the 420 QEW interchange area and a new Oldfield Road crossing, which is south of McCloud, McCloud Road. We went through a, this is just a graphic showing where those additional crossings or improvements would be. The yellow shows where we would have widensings, and the blue shows where there could possibly be new road connections. We went through a fairly comprehensive evaluation, and this is a very, very high-level summary of what we found as part of our evaluation. And we gave the conclusion, and it is a preliminary conclusion until we finalize it with staff, the steering committee, and the public, that a new QEW crossing south of McCloud is preferred from a transportation and economic perspective. So that would be in the Oldfield Road area. So by 2031, that was the preferred solution that we're bringing to the committee and eventually to council. It is preferred from both a transportation and economic perspective, mainly because it provides good linkage to new growth areas and enhances connectivity for auto and non-auto traffic that separates tourist and local traffic flows in the south end of the community. So that was up until 2031. And this is the approximate location where that crossing would be, south of McCloud Road, and I'm sure everybody is familiar with it. Now, the staff came to us and asked us to have a look at what might happen beyond 2031. And given that wasn't part of our terms of reference, we did agree to have a look at it. And we found that beyond 2031, additional capacity may be required even with the Oldfield Road connection. Thorlstone Road will be operating at capacity by 2031. And we went back and looked at, revisited a couple of alternatives. One was extending 420 to connect to Bieber Dam's Road. And the second one was going back and looking again at the flyover at Morrison Street. And we, again, we went through an assessment of looking at the traffic and the traffic impact analysis, and we found that the Morrison Street flyover beyond 2031 provided the greatest level of relief to the network. And this is approximately, everybody I think knows where Morrison Street and the Morrison Street connection is. So the Morrison Street grade separated bridge crossing could connect to the existing Morrison-Dorchester Road intersection through or adjacent to Optimus Park and the existing retail development on the south side of Morrison Street. We believe that the Morrison Street flyover has longer-term crossing benefits, and good planning principles generally support that the corridor should be protected for the following reasons. It's part of the act of transportation, the bike and walking network in the city. This alternative better leaves traffic congestion along Thorlstone Road than an extension of 420. And if you can imagine trying to widen Thorlstone Road across QEW in that area, it's a pretty difficult endeavor. Not impossible, but I think the impacts would be significant. And the absence of a connection at Morrison Street could result in a need to widen Thorlstone Road to six lanes. And we think there's a number of significant environmental, social, and economic perspectives. And just to wrap up on the master plan, we had planned to have a third and final public meeting in August, it may be in early September, and complete our reports in September and October with a council presentation to be scheduled at that time. Now, the one thing I did want to point out was that this is beyond 2031 that we're suggesting you need to protect this crossing for. And we also looked at whether or not you could put Morrison Street in first and Oldfield in later on after 2031. And what we found was that there would be issues south of McCloud and on McCloud with Morrison Street going in initially because you don't have an opportunity to serve the new development lands south of McCloud Road. So we still feel that the connection south of McCloud is a higher priority than a Morrison Street connection. But again, we're suggesting you need to protect the right-of-way for, we believe you need to protect the right-of-way for a longer-term connection to particularly serve local traffic within the area. And that concludes my presentation, your worship. I'd be quite happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allingham. Members of council, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Allingham? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Through yourself to Mr. Allingham. Thanks for being here tonight, making your presentation. Question I have is in regards to the cost, and obviously you've identified some alternatives for council. I'm wondering who would bear the cost of this? Would it be out of development charges? Or would it be something similar to what the MTO recently did in the McCloud Road node where they put a, I believe, a holding designation on all the developable properties there until a servicing agreement was signed so that they each had to contribute part of the overall cost of the improvements?
Well, it's through the chair to Counselor Petrangelo. We believe that because this is not required until after 2031, and because it is a crossing of the QEW, I believe that our report will suggest that this should be a regional connection. So the city will have to engage in discussions with the region and obviously MTO about property protection and longer-term implementation of the crossing.
Does that mean then that the cost would be borne by the region of Niagara?
Well, I think it would have to be negotiated with the region and MTO, and you'd have to justify, again, the need for this particular crossing, which will be contained in the master plan. That's one of the reasons for the master plan is to look at justifying future needs and providing the appropriate protection or recommending mechanisms to provide the appropriate protection for whatever improvements you need either 10, 20, or 30 years down the road.
Would any of the monies come from either the province or the city? Because doesn't the province own all bridges that cross over their highways?
I'm, I'm not sure I'm prepared to, or equipped to actually answer that question at this point in time without further discussions with all of the stakeholders in place, but it would not be beyond the realm of possibility for the region and for the city to be involved in funding this crossing.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. Just taking that into consideration, when you look what happened at McCloud Road, everything was stifled, all the development until such time as the private sector people participated. So certainly the city could be on the hook for a good portion of that. And the way things are going with the region and the province, I would think that's probably the way it'd work out. Am I wrong in thinking that the crossover, the flyover at Morrison Street would be much more expensive than the full field flyover? Would you have to acquire a substantial number of properties on the other side? That was always the impediment in the past.
Through the, through the chair to Counselor Thompson. Yes, the crossing at Morrison Street is estimated at this point in time to be around $27 million in 2011 dollars. The reason is the, let's see if I can get back to the graphic here. The reason for that is the extent, the length of the crossing that would be required because you do have ramps to and from 420. So this is not a small crossing by any stretch of the imagination, and a crossing at Oldfield is considerably cheaper.
And you're suggesting that the one at Oldfield would be, have priority over the other one?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Allingham, can you maybe share with us this study that you're, today you're giving us a little glimpse into a bigger study? Approximately when you started this study and when it's scheduled to be completed?
I can't recall the exact date we started this study. It's about 18 months ago. We are pretty well complete most of the technical work without, we have to complete another steering committee meeting, and we're committed to another public meeting. And once that's done, we'll file a draft report with the staff and with the steering committee for review. So most of the technical work is already done.
So now you need to review, compile everything, review it, and have, as you say, a public meeting?
Yes.
Any idea on the timeline on when you think you'll be ready to come to staff?
We will, our plan right now is September for the public meeting, and probably a draft report sometime just after that.
Okay. Are there any other, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Wing?
Yes, and it actually leads off the last comment. I noted in the staff report that an important process in finalizing a transportation master plan is ensuring the public has opportunities for input, and so far at the public meetings, the attendance has been low. Now, we have a piece of correspondence before us this evening where somebody suggests that tonight's public meeting wasn't advertised enough, the writer doesn't get the newspaper, and leaves a lot of others don't either. And that's the problem, you know? This is very important stuff, and a lot of people just don't catch on to the fact that this is something they need to pay attention to and to attend and give their input on. So I'm wondering if it might not be an idea to hand-deliver to people in the affected areas along the affected roads notices of that public meeting so they have fair opportunity to be aware and come out and take part. And I'm thinking of places like, you know, Heravix and MacMillan, the Dunn Street crossing would, if I were to go ahead, and it doesn't sound like it will, but that would be a very big impact on both those two streets, and I know those two neighborhoods would be up in arms if, you know, it was before us. You know, there's lots of others, McCloud, Kent Street, the affected section of Thorlstone. I think all the property owners there deserve a heads-up so they have fair opportunity to get involved and give their comments now rather than, you know, when things are a lot farther advanced, trying to, you know, not be proactive, but, you know, be in a defensive position then.
Maybe we can get some feedback from staff on that, in Marzana, in terms of circulating, how do we do it currently and what might we do to extend our reach?
Through the chair. Typically what we do is we do advertise. Because this is a master plan that involves the entire city, this is only a small portion of what Mr. Allingham is showing you as part of the, as part of the traffic master plan. So we would technically need to basically deliver, hand-deliver to pretty well almost all of the residents in the city. We are intending to augment our notification in the newspaper by putting in some additional details, some point forms in there to give them some more information as to what items that they may be interested in.
Yeah, it was pointed out too that of the, of the one local paper that everyone does receive it on Friday, so maybe that's if we aren't already. Do we currently advertise on, in Friday's paper, or is it a paper other than Friday?
Through the chair, we typically advertise on Friday and Saturday in the Niagara Falls Review and Niagara this week. So we do put it out about four times.
Ms. Carrick, maybe while you're up, can you let us know too approximately the cost of this study? I know we're asking everyone to look at one part of a much bigger study, but the cost of the study.
Yeah, the entire cost of the study through the chair, it's approximately $420,000 for the Niagara Falls transportation master plan.
Thank you. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Online media is becoming the trend, and I know we had a request from Bullet Media asking if they could post those announcements also. So if maybe Bullet Media could be paired with the Transportation Department and/or Parking and Traffic, that, a lot of people just get their news online now. So, that's another avenue we can go.
Yeah, actually, that's a good point. Even with the review, I mean, the online aspect, I agree, because a lot of people read Bullet in the morning online, and a lot of people read the paper online. They don't get a hard copy anymore. Go ahead.
But Bullet Media has approached the city and asked for that. I forwarded it to the clerk. I just think if we're starting announcements like that, we should probably start with something this important too. Because a lot, Bullet Media is linked to everybody's Facebook and everybody's Twitter and the multimedia, and it would hit a vast majority of people.
I'm sure Bullet Media would be agreeable to that as well. And yet we have some feedback from our clerk.
We also have a notice page on our website that has all municipal notices, so, I mean, that obviously requires the public to actually go look on that site and look for it, but it is there.
Are there any other questions or comments of council? Counselor Maves?
I just have, I have to ask Mr. Allingham about the widening of the Queen E. Now, at 2031, how much wider do you expect the Queen E to be in that area? Were there gonna be another two lanes? So I just wanted, so this would be a tremendous-sized bridge that would have to cross.
It is a, it would be a very lengthy bridge, and I think I can tell you how long we've estimated the bridge to be. It would be approximately, the roadway flyover structure would be at about, it might be about 800 meters.
And at $27 million at today's prices, you'd probably be looking in excess of $50 million or better with that crossing in.
There would be a, by 2031, there would be a significant growth in that cost, obviously.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Counselor Wing?
Yes, sort of related to the study in general. Has there been any consideration given to more on and off ramps to the provincial highways that run through Niagara Falls? The reason I ask that is when I lived in St. Catherine's, I used the 406 and the QEW to get through the city all the time instead of using the arterial roads. And if we could have the opportunities, like say, instead of a flyover at Morrison, a ramp northward onto the QEW in some way to get southbound on the QEW, then people could, instead of tying up Dorchester Road, use the QEW to get down to whatever other arterial east-west road they wanted to.
Through the chair to Counselor Wing. Yes, we have had discussions with MTO about additional access to and from the QEW. One of the issues that does exist, and I know that it's experienced in Niagara Falls, is the current spacing between intersections and the ramps, and an additional interchange or additional ramps would cause some operational problems on the highway, but it is, it is part of the work that's being done to look at alternative access to Niagara Falls.
Okay, that's good, because it seems to me that would be the cheapest way to relieve congestion on the regional and arterial roads is to just start treating the provincial roads as part of our municipal network, because they can move traffic a lot more efficiently than the provincial.
Yeah, I think, I don't think there's anybody from MTO here today, so I can probably say this, they, they would probably take oblige with the fact that they would have to handle local traffic, their freeway's not designed to handle trips between, you know, interchange hopping. So we'll have, we'll have to portray that slightly differently when, when we talk about it.
Mr. Beeman?
Just like I said, just from my experience as a road traveler, Mr. Allingham, that sort of thing is a special road, and MTO's only too happy to have provided rural canines up the face of the road. So that's the thing, I think that's the word, Mr. Allingham, to light any counsel. When you start talking to an intrude city traffic using the highway, and MTO says, "Yeah, so it's your road." So, hey, yeah. And so, of course, then you get the municipal tax that you're being asked to pay for, it's essentially a provincial facility. So as Mr. Allingham rightly cautioned, you have to be very careful with those sort of things, sort of with the wind, keeping in mind, examining the streets, you must be careful, not stating "for" yet. It's been fine courtship, this is recorded, just before, we're advocating immediately just calling our, we want to do it your way, because they'll quickly step up the firewall, just putting that warning up there.
Fair enough. Counselor Maves, Counselor Carrillo? I'm sorry, Counselor Gates, Counselor Carrillo?
Thanks very much, and thanks for your presentation. It's greatly appreciated, but I think you've given us enough information on deciding what to do, and I, we talked a little bit earlier about the deferral. I really would think that, having heard you speak, I would still like the opportunity tonight. The residents have, came today, I see the Optimus Club is here, the girls softball's here. This is kind of like a whole package deal in your, in this particular area on Dorchester, and I would like to say to Mr. Todd, I don't think I'd be in favor of a referral. I think we got all the players here tonight. I moved the motion a couple weeks ago, the last council meeting, that I'd like to hear from all the stakeholders in this particular area. And that would include the Optimus, the Optimus Club who's here, that include the residents who, I was told by the River Realtors lawyer at the last council meeting that there was no issues there. Obviously, with the turnout that hears tonight, I believe there are some issues in that particular area, and obviously the flyover is part of that. So I, I just wanna say upfront that I'm not in favor of a referral. I think we should hear all three of these, give the residents an opportunity to talk, give the, anybody else that wants to talk, particularly the Optimus Club, who I've had the opportunity to talk to some, and let them at least explain exactly where they are, and then obviously the residents. I wouldn't be in favor of a deferral at this point in time, for sure.
Okay, I would just ask our CAO to comment on the implications of that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that the reason we suggested a deferral in the report was that if after having heard Mr. Allingham's explanation, and due to the fact that the overall master plan will not be finalized and council will not have that complete picture on the master plan until sometime in October, that would be something that they may want to defer the issues relating to the Optimus Park until they made a decision on the flyover, because the flyover really impacts on what that land could be used for and what that development may look like. Having said that, if council after hearing Mr. Allingham is satisfied that they could make a decision on the flyover tonight, then we could proceed with the other reports. We wouldn't be shutting the people out, it's just that we'd be having them back probably in October to deal with the item and dealing with the development application at that time. But we just felt it was not fair to the developers, not fair to the optimists, to interlink a decision on a flyover with their development proposal, because they really are two separate issues, and they're two separate issues that council should deal with.
I appreciate those comments, but the reality is that the flyover is really just a small part of the parcel here. There's a lot of other issues that are in that particular area, and, you know, it's about 105 degrees outside. They've given up their night to come here and explain themselves to council. I think we should show the respect of all the parties here and let them at least talk about it. about that. As far as the, the flyover, Mr. Todd, that is just a very small part of some of the concerns of the residents, some of the concerns of the optimists, and certainly the Girls' Fastballs. So I appreciate your comments, certainly, but I'm still wouldn't be in favor of not getting them a chance to speak tonight.
Okay, we'll hear from some more counsel. We've got Counsel Carrillo, then Counsel Thompson.
Thank you, Your Worship. There are some things I'd like to address, some of the proponents tonight. I think there's things that we need to know. I'm not in favor of a total deferral. I don't think they were going to make a decision tonight, but there are some myths that I'd like dispelled at the meeting, and I, and I know that the proponents are prepared to speak on them, and I'd like the people in the room to have had the opportunity to know some of the things I know, so they can decide then for themselves what they want to do in the future. The other thing I wanted to say was, it seems a little odd through you to Mr. Allingham that when I drive to Toronto, drive to Toronto a lot, and you see the amount of accesses there are on the Gardner to go into Toronto, we almost have the same amount. You know, there's only like York, Young, there's only like four or five accesses off the Gardner Expressway that services that whole end of Toronto. It seems odd that we're talking almost about the same amount of accesses, and we're light, and we need more, so I'm not totally convinced. When I look at that situation compared to our situation, it just doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense.
Well, this is not a, through the chair, sir, this is not an accesses as a flyover.
I understand.
It's actually connecting the community, crossing a barrier, so it seems a little different than...
I understand that, but they use their accesses as their crossovers, too, in some cases underneath the Gardner, but...
Okay, we've got Counselor Thompson.
Yes, first of all, I think that this issue regarding Optimus Park, and I appreciate you're here for another reason, which directly relates to that, is probably one of the most important decisions this council is probably going to make in the coming year. And I'm not interested in being rushed to judgment on something as important as this. I think if you took a poll of this council around the room and said, "Are you interested in seeing Optimus Park go away?", I think you'd have a unanimous vote. Absolutely not. But there are all kinds of extenuating circumstances with respect to this, and one of them has to do with the Morrison Street extension. How that got included in the plan of a subdivision development, I have no idea. Whether somebody gave authority to the developer to include that in the development proposal, I don't know. But that's our property. We haven't made a decision with respect to that at this point, and I don't know why we're even discussing this until that particular point, until we find out about the flyover and all of the other ramifications, and what opportunities and what options we have that we can make an informed decision. I'm not taking this lightly and trying to sweep this through in a hurry. This is a major, major decision, and I think we want to take our time and make sure we make the right decision that is going to affect the community in the long term. This is not insignificant.
Fair enough. Counsel Ryanone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To piggyback on Counselor Thompson's question, he does know how that piece of property got in the development. I think the fact that it's in the development without us approving it leads the residents to believe it's already a done deal. And, and I was home all day today and answering my phone all day today, and I had an opportunity to speak to many of them, and a lot of them thought it's already a done deal. And when you talk about myths you have to dispel, first of all, the city is not approving the sale of the Optimus. That is not what we're doing. I called this morning to ask, is the Optimus sold? Has the deal closed? And my understanding, and I hope if, and I think we need to defer it also, but my understanding is it's a done deal, and that the options have been, the, what are they called? The conditions have been removed. So we cannot, and I think the residents, it's important they understand, we are not voting on whether the Optimus can sell the property. They've done that. We aren't, we aren't deciding what the developer wants to do with the property. The approval comes to us when the zoning change comes. And somebody said to me, "So are you going to approve the sale of the Optimus tonight?" I said, "We aren't talking about the sale of the Optimus tonight. That's a done deal." So the only thing before, should, before us that we're going to approve in regards to the development is the Brandscomb Changes zoning development, which is a, am I, am I correct? Because I'm trying to explain this so everybody in that subdivision watching understands. We don't control who the Optimus sold to, we don't control that they sell it, we don't control who buys it. That's all been done between the developer and the Optimus. The only say we have is when the, when the developer comes for a zoning amendment. And I talked to many people today and said, well, I talked to everybody who called, and said, "My understanding is, I think we're going to end up deferring it." Not one person had an objection to us deferring it. Nobody wants it done. Nobody in that subdivision wants that park gone. Unfortunately, we can't dictate to Brandscomb what you can and cannot do on property you now own. So I think we need to clearly explain what it is that's before us and what we have control over, because we are not buying Optimus, and Optimus is sold. I think that's really, because that didn't seem to be understood a lot today.
Fair comment. Counsel Carrillo?
He's Your Worship. I wasn't disagreeing with Counselor Thompson's intention to have it deferred, and I agree on the deferral. But I would like the residents to hear from the buyer and the seller about the deal, and I think they're prepared to talk a bit about it, so that dispels the myth of the residents. That's what I wanted to hear, that's all.
Maybe I could ask the clerk to, clerk just to comment on procedurally how we go about this. And for those of you following this, obviously, the first issue is the Morrison Street Extension flyover, because the, right now, the proposal involves utilizing that for the development. While it still remains in the, in the ownership of the city. So that's why we have Mr. Allingham here to explain the need or lack of need of this over, of this, sorry, I'm hearing my voice out in the hallway. It's, who's mimicking me out there? So we have Mr. Allingham explain the flyover concept, because we need to first decide, are we saving Morrison? And if we are, then that changes the proposal before us. So therefore, the proposal that's here today will have to be changed. So, so it starts with the decision of the Morrison flyover. So what counselors are suggesting is just get a, get a couple of the issues out on the floor before we defer this, because it seems to me, if I'm hearing the counselors, this is going to get deferred. No decision is going to be made tonight until we have the full transportation plan removed. So what we're asking tonight is, or what's being referred to, is, and we'll ask at the will of counsel, and I'm going to ask the clerk to comment, the idea of having maybe two people speak, one for the Optimus and one for the developer. So maybe we can get some of the facts and have the, is that where we're at? Where are you at, Mr. Gates?
Well, first of all, to Caroline Ione's point, a lot of the residents felt that it was a done deal, because I believe that's what was reported at the, at the open house. To Counselor Carrillo's point, that's exactly where I was. I think it's important for us counsel, because of what Counselor Ione has talked about, is there is a lot of misconceptions out there. One, who owns the land today? I had to ask about six people last week to get an answer, and I'm still not sure if it's a right answer. It's my understanding today, as we're here at counsel, it's actually owned by the Optimus Club, and it doesn't close until the middle of August on the conditions that are in place today. I believe that's how it is today, but I think the residents didn't, didn't, didn't know that, so that's, that's what was told to me. So I think what, I'm agreeing with Counsel Carrillo. I don't mind a deferral after we've had the, you talked to the residents, talked to the Optimus Club, talked to the buyer, and find out exactly what's going on with this parcel of land and where we are today, because I don't want to go two more months of having to talk to the residents, who I went and knocked on their door all weekend, to, to find out what's really going on in that area. And I want to find out the truth on what's going on from the Optimus, and how they, they come about to the point where, you know, they had provided 40, 50, 60 years of incredible service to this community, that they got to a point where they had to sell it. I'd like to hear from the developer on how he got to this point. I've read his tabs, quite frankly, and some of the stuff that's in the tabs are certainly misleading from what I had heard. And then I had the opportunity this weekend to go door-to-door in, in that area and talk to the residents. And to Counsel Ione's point, and to Wing, Counsel Thompson's point, there isn't a resident in that area that wants to see the green space from Optimus Park be, be sold for this particular purpose. I don't think it's not just, and it's not just that area, by the way, it's right across the city. So we have somebody saying there's no opposition to this, and I disagree with it. I think there's a lot of opposition to it, but I think the council should have the opportunity tonight to hear all the players. We don't have to make a decision tonight, we can defer it after we've heard from somebody, and then if we want to talk to the residents, we want to talk to the developer, we want to talk to the Optimus Club, we can do that over the course of the next two months, because obviously his report's not going to be done until, it looks like, October. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, our objective here, we're not going to turn this into a public meeting tonight, so we're not going to hear from everybody. We'll hear perhaps one from each side to get some questions answered. Since there's no decision going to be made, we're not going to rehash it, then do it all over again in October. That's a waste of everybody's time. So I'm going to ask Mr. Beaman to comment, and I've got Counsel Ryanone, and then we'll pick our two people.
Point of order, there's more than, more than three, two sides.
That's fine, we'll pick our, we'll pick our side.
There's three, three sides of the story. So if you're going to open it up, you're going to open it up, and you're going to do double duty, so.
Well, you know what we'll do? We're going to, we're going to take, we'll get a motion of the council to do the will of the council, because we agree, we don't want, if, if our intention is to defer this, let's not go through this twice, let's just do it once. But I do agree, though, Counsel Gates has a good point, that he wants to get a couple of the issues on the table, so we know what we're dealing with. Yes, Counsel Ryanone, and then I want to hear from Mr. Beaman.
Okay, to that point, I understand Counsel Gates' passion, but there, listening to him, I'm getting the impression that there's some way we can sway the sale of this property. It's sold. It's done. Can we, can we tell Optimus not to sell this property?
No.
So why would we have that conversation? I don't need to know the history of the Optimus. The residents, nobody wants anything other than green space. Clearly, that's not what Mr. Brandscomb's looking for. So it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me why, A, we wouldn't have informed them that we're leaning towards deferral anyway, pulling everybody out here tonight, and second of all, why would we do it twice? So, you know, I don't have a problem making a motion for deferral, but I think the minute you open that door a little, you're unfair not to open it the entire way.
Good point, good point. Mr. Beaman?
Well, Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of things, Mr. Allingham, I think we could... There are a couple of things, ways we might deal with the situation. The first thing that I think is important for everyone to remember in terms of utilizing everyone's time usefully, is that if counsel doesn't make up its mind about the right-of-way today, then there's no point in discussing the subdivision or the rezoning, because both of those are dependent upon the developer persuading the city that to give them, to sell them the right-of-way. So the, any proposal, if counsel elects tonight to defer, or indeed that they decide it's not surplus to their needs, that would mean that the whole thing would have to be redone, and in fairness to the residents, they'd have to get a second shot at going at whatever the final proposal is. So in that sense, I would suggest we have a bit of a difficulty. However, Counsel Gates, I believe, there are certain, what he is really trying to achieve here, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but it seems to me that what he's trying to do is get the facts of the situation of the sale in front of the public, so that they know from the point of view of the optimists and the purchaser what the terms of the deal are, and to confirm what Counsel Ryanone is putting forward, so that we know going forward, if it's deferred, and when we come back in the latter part of, when Mr. Allingham is ready to report, that there will be a definitive owner at that time. And I think that that could be achieved by considering that we have two public meetings going on, we have two matters that we're, the council's getting input on here today. One is the road situation declared, the potential declaration of surplus of this property, and the other is the rezoning issue. So I would suggest that it might be possible procedurally to hear the information about the sale under the guise of the consideration of the closure of the, the road, closure and declaration of surplus of the road, and at the same time, not open the rezoning meeting, because that needs to be deferred until such time as council's determined what exactly they want to do with that road. So that, that's a possibility of, of getting those, those issues dealt with at that time. I think, I realize the public has come out tonight, but in fairness to them, what they, they're going to be, have to go through the whole thing twice unless, or it simply are, if counsel is unable, and I, I don't think anybody could be critical of counsel for not being able to deal with the road tonight. So those are my...
Are you suggesting first a referral, or are you suggesting maybe...
What I'm suggesting is that we would hear, counsel would hear from developer and the landowner on the issue of what the exact status of the legal relationship on the transfer of the road is, so that that information would now be in the public realm, and so everybody could govern themselves in accordance with that information, and that, at least that much of the sort of rumors that surround the project is straightened out, so that as people go forward, they're advancing on a factual basis.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Allingham, I think we're good on your end, so thank you. Sorry. You're still advertising on your back, you'll be okay. All right, so we've had the suggestion. Mr. Meritoria, would you please approach the microphone? Counsel, Counsel Morocco?
Well, I think you should get a motion.
Okay, I'll go to motion here for Mr. Meritoria.
I'm, I'm not going to put a motion for it. I really don't think it's fair to anybody here to just have one person speak when you have all the parties here. I think that would be a mistake for counsel to do. So I, I mean, it's, you let all, you let all the stakeholders talk, or you don't let one.
Counsel Carrillo?
Would it help if I asked the question to lead into Mr. Meritoria's speaking?
Well, first, okay.
That if I asked the question, could we ask on this topic, Mr. Meritoria to comment on what happens to his proposal if we do one thing or another on the Morrison Street flyover? Because he's included it. So he could comment on what happens with his proposal, what happens with his development, and he could maybe lead into telling us where the, what the deal is with the property now, because the people want to know, and they really don't want to hear it from Counsel Ryanone or myself. They really want to hear it from the people that are involved. So my question would be to him, what happens to his proposal if counsel decides to keep the land and for future flyover? And then he could maybe speak on that.
Well, we need a motion to hear from Mr. Meritoria. That's what I'm told by the clerk, so we do.
There seems to be some discussion about who's going to say what, and who's going to speak, and how many people are going to speak. There seems to be some desire that we not rehash the matter four months down the road, or October, whenever the matter's coming back. I also think what Mr. Beaman was alluding to is that on the planning aspects of the report, there's no point of the public coming up and speaking to something, because the permutation of the subdivision could change depending on counsel's decision. So to have a bunch of people from the public stand up and say, "Don't sell the property", which isn't ours to sell, which is what Counsel Ryanone's talking about, you know, I mean, I think it's a waste, waste of everybody's time and energy here. Now, what I understand counsel to be wanting is some clarification on the sale of the property and limiting any presentation to just those aspects, and I would suggest, if that's what you want, make a motion to that effect, as opposed to getting into all of these planning issues.
Okay, Counsel Ryanone?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, it is, I'm going to defer, I'm going to make a motion to defer the three applications before us.
Okay, we have a motion, Counsel Ryanone, for deferral, and a second by Counselor Wing.
Because then we can ask for...
The motion is non-debatable. Okay, so we're going to call the vote. All those in favor? Five, six. Okay, the motion passes. Counsel Ryanone?
Now, asking, asking our solicitor, I can now ask in regard, because the sale is not before us. So I have, well, Mr. Meritoria's here, and we're using his time. Mr. Meritoria, is the property sold? Is the deal closed? What date does the deal close? That's the big $64,000 question. Are there any conditions? Were the conditions waived? I mean, rumors are terrible, and I think it just makes everybody more uncomfortable. So do you think you could clear those up for us?
Absolutely. First of all, I think this is the right decision. We shouldn't embark on the planning evidence that comes forward for the purpose of a public meeting under the provisions of the Planning Act. It would be unfair to everybody on that, on that issue. So, two things I think the need clarification. One, why was the Morrison Street right-of-way included within the proponents' plans? We knew that it was the property of the city. There was no question about it. We went to staff and said, "What do you want us to do?" They said, "Show us your best proposal." And if that best proposal would include those lands, then show it on the understanding that you, counsel has to make a decision on that point. So that's done.
To that point, he's talking planning matters that we've deferred. All I wanted to know was questions on the sale.
Okay. All right, so in...
All right, so in, as my, if you've received the booklet I gave you, in late March, when we were laying out the plans, we met with planning staff and said, "We have, under our agreement of purchase and sale with the optimists, a drop dead date of April the 19th. By that date, we must waive conditions." That was the date we had negotiated back in November or December of the previous year. And so we went to planning staff on the basis of saying, "Tell us everything you want to tell us about this plan because we have to do that." So, and Mr. Emadu is here, he's the solicitor for the other side. He received a letter from me, I think, the day before that date waiving conditions. So we not only have a firm deal, but our client's gone in, we've done the remediation of the property, we've paid for that, we've got our deposits. In addition to the deposits, my client's expended already on the site in excess of $240,000. So while we haven't closed the transaction, we have no right to back out of the transaction, and neither does the optimist. Except for the transfer of title, this is a done deal. So I don't care what rumors you have out there. Mr. Emadu is here, and he can tell you exactly the same thing. This is a done deal. No one can back out of this deal.
Okay, Counselor Ianone?
And to that point, the sale of the land is a done deal, but for the residents to know, the zoning is not a done deal. That's where we come in. And the idea that it was conditional upon rezoning, if I understand those conditions were waived or pulled out?
It was never conditional upon rezoning.
Okay.
The optimists wouldn't accept that condition.
Okay, so the decision on whether it's rezoned for Mr. Brans, the applicant's application, of course, that will be done in another day, but we have no control over anything other than that. People are confused.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Meritori? So everyone understands that, as you say, the title has not changed yet, but you've got a binding agreement that ties the two parties together, and that'll happen at some date in the near future.
It will happen sometime in August, probably.
In August, okay. Counselor Gates?
So if I'm correct, you own a park?
Well, I'm glad it's not your decision to own, Mr. Gates.
I'm sure you're not. You own the park, was my question.
No, we own a piece of property for which we have an application for redesignation, rezoning, and a plan of subdivision, not necessarily in this configuration, because we may have to change that, and we may have to change the road system, we may have to change everything. But my client has purchased a piece of property from a private individual, like happens every day, everywhere.
Yeah, Counselor Peter Angelo?
So the purchase of your property didn't include the city lands?
No, of course not. We don't own those lands, and that's why we had that discussion with members of staff as to whether we would show it on the plan of subdivision or not. They said, "If it's your best plan, then show them." And we did, on the understanding that it was the decision of this body as to whether they would sell them or not.
Are there more questions of Mr. Meritori?
Clear.
Okay, where everybody's clear on the ownership?
Crystal.
Crystal clear, okay. And just for those members of council that, I know a lot of people were asked to come out tonight, I did want to mention that our RMPP creator was supposed to be here tonight. I know he had told a number of you, and he had called in to let us know he's caught up at a hospital meeting with the Lynn that he couldn't get out of. But just by way of a show of hands, member of people from the public that are here tonight for this issue, can you just show us, show hands here for this issue? So the majority of the people, okay. All right, that's good. And I'm just going to ask the CAO to have a final comment, and we're going to move on.
Mr. Mayor, just thought before everybody leaves tonight, we should let everybody understand what the process is from here on. The three items were deferred. So there's the report on the flyover dealing with Morrison Street. The second report is the declaration of surplus lands, and the third is the development proposal for the optimist lands. We've heard from Mr. Allingham, and he's indicated that we'll have a public meeting and have the transportation master plan back before this council sometime in early October. I would suggest that what would be happening is that we deal with that master plan, deal with it as a document, council will deal with it, which would include the flyover. Once that decision is made, we will have the other two reports come forward on the declaration of surplus land and the rezoning. If council decides that the flyover is a requirement, then we'll be back to the developers, the proponents, and be working with them to suggest that they would have to look at redesigning their development plans, and we'd have to decide on how we're going to incorporate that into our overall planning documents. So it's going to be sequential, but the first thing we'd have back is in October. So just for residents, there'll be another notice coming out at the appropriate time. I would suggest probably sometime in later October, dealing with the rezoning of the lands at that time.
Yeah, Counselor Ianone?
It has to be farther than the 200 meters, too. A couple of the gentlemen who called me are further, a little bit farther down the road between Thorold Stone and Morrison, and they said, "We're outside of the 200 meters, and we didn't receive a notice." So there has to be an extension of notice for that entire subdivision.
Okay, well, we can give, do you want that as direction, or you want a motion?
We need a motion for that because everybody needs to be informed.
I'm sorry, sir, we're not going to be able to answer questions today, it's not going to be a public meeting today. Perhaps?
But there is a main issue, and the first meeting we had was closed roads not to be open. And council does have the right to close that road off, and that's one of the main issues.
We do, but that'll be, that's going to be dealt with at the public meeting for the master plan for transportation. Yep, no, we're aware of that.
Why are you calling me?
Guys, this is not a public meeting. Okay, that is going to take, that is going to take place later. Sir, sir, this is not a public meeting. I appreciate your comments, thank you. Mr. CAO?
We can look at, you know, looking at further field, but it's where do you cut that off? I think we've got a couple of opportunities we can, the site has to be posted again, so...
I can't hear you. Got to close the door, guys, we can't hear if the door's open.
There's opportunities to be able to advertise this a little bit more widely, but it's going to be difficult to expand that, obviously, to conclude the whole neighborhood. The site has to be posted, so if you live in the neighborhood, many of you have seen the signs, I've seen them every day I drive by, signs posted on the fence. Advertisements will be in the review on Fridays because it's circulated to every household. Every household gets a free paper on Friday, so you should be getting it, and the shopping news comes to every household, so watch in there for the ads. Those are the main areas. If not, you can always contact the clerk's office directly, and we'll let you know the dates. And that's the best we can do right now, but keep in mind, it'll probably be sometime around the end of October. And if you're interested in the transportation master plan with the Morrison Street flyover, that'll be a separate issue, and you're all quite welcome to come out to that as well, and that'll probably be sometime in early October. So be watching for any advertisements on the transportation master plan. And that'll include the discussion on the Morrison Street extension.
Thank you. And Mr. Clerk?
Just to echo further what Mr. Todd said, you know, just because you don't get personal notice doesn't mean you don't have to come out, or you don't have to inform yourself of the issue. That's one of the rationales for putting the big sign on the property is because we know that there's people farther than what's required under the Planning Act that may have an interest in the item. So there seems to be this misconception that you have to receive this personal notice from the city to come out to the meetings. That's not the case. Obviously, probably half of you here in this room didn't get personal notice, but you found out about the meeting anyways. Similarly, I'm sure that'll happen in the fall as well, and if you have any concerns, if you're not in the 200 meters as stipulated by the Planning Act, sign the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber, and that'll ensure you get a direct correspondence.
Yeah, so make sure everyone, before you leave, sign the sign-in sheet. This way you'll be guaranteed notification. Watch your Friday papers, register with Bullet Media, get your updates every day, and for sure you'll know where. And of course, you can always call us if you need clarification on the dates. So that's it for now, folks. We're going to be looking at the fall, where we're going to have our transportation master plan to deal with Morrison, then we'll deal with the subdivision proposal. Thank you very much.
Can we talk to people or not?
Not, not.
I'm not a public speaker. I'm just... Who's this guy? And the hurry for my meeting this morning. I don't know my part. I don't know my part. Chris, Chris.
Okay, folks, we're going to get started with our planning matter. We can please close the door? The soccer question won't be coming up until after the planning matter, so if anyone's out in the hall right now, you're okay. I now ask the city clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda.
Gee, I don't think we've ever had so many people for a semi-detached dwelling. A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit two semi-detached dwellings at 3431 and 3441 St. Patrick Avenue. There's a typo on the agenda, St. Patrick Avenue, not St. Paul Avenue. Notice was given, was actually hand-delivered because of the postal strike on Monday, June 20th, 2011, to all owners of land within the area to which the application applies, and to all owners of land within 120 meters of the land to which the application applies. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Okay, to ask our Director of Planning to please state the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll go through the presentation here by first describing this property. It's 3341 St. Patrick Avenue. The proposal is from Mr. Bob Savoda, and proposal is for two semi-detached dwellings. Now, there are two lots. This gives you a description of the lots in question. They're outlined in blue, so they're both single, or they're both lots that can now be developed for single-family. And we have surrounding the property, we have a semi-detached shown here to the west, and A and Meyer to the south. Predominantly, single-family in the area around the subject site, except for that one semi. We have a small apartment block there and some commercial, both to the north and south of Long O'Neill. This just shows an air photograph of the subject property. You'll notice that between, in the middle is a line that sort of changes direction. There will be a requirement to make that a straight line once the development occurs, so that would be subject to a severance down the road a bit. To show you what these houses, or the semi-detached, will look like, they will be raised bungalows. I understand they're going to be all brick homes, and they're trying to keep in, they'll satisfy all the requirements of a semi-detached lot, so there's no variances or committee of adjustment requirements, or special provisions, if you will, to these lots. Just some background, the lands are currently zoned residential, single-family, R1C, which only permits single-family. The zoning is required to change it to an R2, which would allow both single-family and two-family development. So that's the subject of the rezoning tonight. We had a neighborhood meeting on June 16th. There were some seven residents in attendance at that meeting. There were concerns raised, including the increase in traffic. Some may argue that it's marginal because you're allowing or adding potentially two more residents. Sewer capacity was raised. We have an email from the municipal work saying there is capacity in the existing, for existing sewer. As far as incompatible land use and character of the street, most of the homes are older in nature. This obviously would be the new semi-detached. So, you know, there is some validity to the character of the street. Decline in property values, that was an argument some of the residents made. We understand the semi-detached dwelling units would sell probably in the order of $200,000. So we don't really, you know, agree that that's going to change the property value of the surrounding lands. It's, so there's some comment on that that could be taken a little less seriously. The possibility of renting the semi-detached, we understand that they will be sold. I guess some comments about if the economic times are not su- to go through the cost of a survey. Why not change the orientation a lot? It's very reasonable.
Yeah, I can comment on that. I thought of that as well, because it would be in order of the other semi-detached to the west. But from a safety perspective, you have a higher-tier road in O'Neill, as opposed to St. Patrick. It's a lower-tier, it's more easily, so from a safety perspective, you're better off with the access in the driveways on St. Patrick, as opposed to O'Neill.
If you're looking at a safety perspective, then why don't you go with lower density?
That's a decision counsel can make. Do we have any other questions, or counsel? Mr. Bolbruck, too, there was a question here from Mrs. Walter, and she asked, "Once the zoning is changed, is there anything to stop them from building larger, more intrusive, such as apartment buildings on this property in question?"
Yes, so that answer is no, there would be no apartment to be allowed, it would have to come back for another rezoning. All that will be permitted would be single-family and a semi-detached development.
No other questions from counsel? Alright. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at the public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 3419 of the Planning Act. Counsel will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone that would like to speak to counsel, other than the applicant? Maybe one at a time, if you could approach the microphone, please? Could you please state your name and your address, for the record?
Good evening, my name is Rob Haye, I live at 6352 Brock Street. Your worship and members of counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening to express our opinion regarding this proposal for our neighborhood. My wife and I have lived at Brock Street, in part of the area designated as Historic Stamford Village, for over 30 years. Also, our daughter's family lives on St. Patrick Avenue, in one of the few remaining 200-year-old homes. She and her husband have done renovations to the home, and have made every effort to maintain the authentic character of the house. As an infill situation, we believe the current proposal is inappropriate and unnecessary. A multiple-family dwelling does not fit this neighborhood, and we believe a reasonable profit could be made by the developer with the construction of single-family homes, in keeping with what is presently on the street. With the entry of a multiple-family dwelling into the neighborhood, likely or not, property values will decrease, and the character of the neighborhood will be affected in a negative manner. The citizens currently living in this community wish, just as you would, to maintain their single-family neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haye. If you could state your name and your address, please?
My name's Diane Newistig, and I reside at 3423 St. Patrick Avenue. We, the undersigned, respectfully request that the Niagara Falls City Council deny the application to change the zoning bylaw to permit the construction of two semi-detached homes on the lots located at 3431 St. Patrick and 3441. City file AM 2011-005. St. Patrick Avenue in Niagara Falls is a unique street in an older-established neighborhood of single-family homes. It is part of the historic village of Stamford Center, and has homes dating back to 1805, intermixed with homes of more recent vintage. The lots are larger than most current construction, with many mature trees, and homes are single-family, mostly owner-occupied and zoned as such, R1C. We purchased our homes here to enjoy the benefits of this unique residential neighborhood with its single-family focus. We have paid our taxes, tended to our yards, many of us have raised families, and we are concerned that the addition of higher density housing will adversely affect the nature and character of the street and neighborhood. The result would be a loss of enjoyment of our property, and subsequent lowering of property values. To close, we request that the city council deny the application to change the zoning for 3431 and 3441. If our petition has any weight, the people say no, and I have a petition, that's a petition signed by 73 people in the area.
Okay, we can submit that to the clerk. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, do we have someone else that would like to, yep, come on up, ma'am? Thank you. Could you just state your name and your address, please?
My name is Valerie Walter, and I live at 3440, right across the street from the proposed zoning change. I was the one that asked about the sewers, and also about the traffic. What you don't know, and possibly have never experienced, is the fact that we live opposite A.Mire, which is a transfer point for various other schools in the area. There are 14 buses every day that go zooming down that St. Patrick, twice a day, morning and evening. It's very, very difficult to get out of my driveway, and if I had known how difficult it was, I probably would have bought a place somewhere else. However, we're not talking about two driveways making any difference. What we're talking about is increasing the difficulty of access to our own property, because of the parents who park along the road, because of the snowplow, the deposits, huge deposits of snow in our driveways, because of coming around the corner, and all the other attendant aggravations of living across from a major school. The other thing about the sewer, I'm delighted to hear the sewer has perfect capacity, but unfortunately, there are trees all along that street with long, long roots. They go into the sewer, and one, the last time I had a sewer backup in my basement, which wasn't pleasant, it wasn't large, but it was very smelly, the crew, the city crew that came around to deal with it told me that, "Oh yeah, we hear every other, every other year." Now, I'm wondering if two families on that corner, producing sewer backups, what will happen when there are five families? Four families in the duplexes, plus me? Frankly, I can't see any point in changing a good thing. Well, my brother, who came down to check out my new house, as brothers do, he looked around the neighborhood, he walked all around, and he wouldn't comment on how beautiful it was, what a nice blend of houses there were, how well-planned the trees were, the gardens. He's lived all over the world, St. Lucia, Rio de Janeiro, Sao Paulo, Hong Kong, and his wife volunteers for the Royal Botanical Gardens. They know neighborhoods, and they know gardening. If they were impressed, I'm sure other strangers are impressed, which adds the property value of our house, our houses. I'm sure Mrs. Saboda wants to return for his investment, and there's no blame him for that, but I want to return for my investment, too. And I also have paid taxes in this city for 48 years, so frankly, I think my feelings and feelings of the rest of the neighborhood should be respected above all other things. You have a little street sign saying Historic Stamford Village. If you didn't want to preserve it as an entity, why on earth did you waste time and money on putting street signs up? It is an entity, it's been there for a long time, before it was incorporated into Niagara Falls, and I think it should stay the way it is. And I respectfully ask you to reject this application for rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to address this, other than the applicant? Please state your name and your address.
Good evening, Bill Dwyer, 3381 St. Paul. I also live in this area and neighborhood for the old-growth trees and atmosphere. The one thing I've noticed, though, is, I'll say it, the population there is getting aged, is getting old. In 10 years, 15 years, are they planning on selling their properties of various sizes, and moving out? And are we setting precedents for duplexes going in on the rest of the lots?
That's good, thank you very much. Is there anyone else, other than the applicant, that wanted to speak? Okay, seeing none, counsel will now hear from the applicant, or his or her representative. Is the applicant here? Yeah, here we go.
Good evening, your worship.
Evening.
Members of staff, council members, thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak of this application. One of the things that Mr. Saboda and I sat down and had a discussion about was the design of the buildings. And the design of the buildings was very important to blend into the neighborhood. We're planning, we kept a low profile on the building. I tried to provide a lot of detail on the drawing, to give out as much information as possible, so people would understand the concept. It's gonna be brick all the way around, there's gonna be some decorative columns facing St. Patrick. They have a single-and-a-half-car garage attached to each one, and there's approximately 1,800 square feet, these units. The living space, probably on the upper level, the bedrooms and so forth in the lower level, or reverse, we haven't decided yet. But, the other thing was, when we were setting the buildings on the site, we met all the criteria that was required by the zoning bylaw, setbacks and so forth. As a matter of fact, the front yard setback is farther back than the required 20 feet. And the rear yard is approximately 35 feet, rather than 25 feet. And the exterior side yard is beyond what it should have been, as far as the zoning bylaw is concerned, the same with the interior side yard. So the footprint of the building on the site is way under what can be put on there. The buildings, the semis will be for sale, they're not gonna be for rent, and I think Mr. Bolbruck hit on a lot of points that I was gonna make tonight, and that is that we're looking at selling them for $185,000 or $200,000. We're hoping to attract families to these semis, or empty nesters, people who are looking to downsize. He intends to put some money into the development, into the interior of the units. The other thing was, I had designed it with, I believe it was a six-meter-wide driveway, and the idea was that an additional car in the family, you could pull it to the side, and one car in the garage, instead of behind each other. The planning department came along and said, "Look, we wanna go to a four-meter driveway to enhance the landscaping along the front." We agreed to that, so we've reduced the front driveway width to four meters from six meters. And this would then provide more green space in front of the house. There are some mature trees about the perimeter of, along St. Patrick and O'Neill, and they're on city property, so we have no intention of removing. I think that would be done at great risk. So, having said most of these, most of the points that I've mentioned, again, we try to keep the low profile, the residential feel of the building, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the council members would have, or...
Thank you. Mr. Cristelli, members of counsel, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, and I guess, your worship, that I'll ask Mr. Cristelli, thanks for being here, the same questions that I asked Mr. Bolbruck, and those were in regards to the orientation of buildings, and I guess, keeping the designation of one of the properties, the one that abuts single-family residential, as R1C, and actually moving the other one to R2.
Yeah, this, there are items in the zoning bylaw that require a 20-meter, on the exterior lot, it requires a 20-meter frontage, and I believe the interior one was 18 meters, that we had to, that's the minimum that we had to apply to it, and we did it. And the other way, if you flip them over to O'Neill, it kinda landlocks the one back corner of the lot, to the north, and it doesn't, I don't know that that would have met the criteria of the width, the required width of the property, the 20 meters and the 18 meters. The other thing was, there was mention of the safety factor. There is a lot of traffic along O'Neill when the high school-
I tried to provide a lot of detail on the drawing to give out as much information as possible so people would understand the concept. It's going to be brick all the way around, there's going to be some decorative columns facing St. Patrick. They have a single and a half-car garage attached to each one, and there's approximately 1,800 square feet, these units. The living space probably on the upper level, the bedrooms and so forth in the lower level, or reverse, we haven't decided yet. But the other thing was when we were setting the buildings on the site, we met all the criteria that was required by the zoning bylaw, setbacks and so forth. As a matter of fact, the front yard setback is farther back than the required 20 feet. And the rear yard is approximately 35 feet rather than 25 feet. And the exterior side yard is beyond what it should have been as far as the zoning bylaw's concerned, the same with the interior side yard. So the footprint of the building on the site is way under what can be put on there. The buildings, the semis will be for sale, they're not going to be for rent, and I think Mr. Bolbruck hit on a lot of points that I was going to make tonight, and that is that we're looking at selling them for $185,000 or $200,000. We're hoping to attract families to these semis or empty nesters, people who are looking to downsize. He intends to put some money into the development, into the interior of the units. The other thing was, I had designed it with, I believe it was a six-meter wide driveway, and the idea was that an additional car in the family, you could pull it to the side and one car in the garage instead of behind each other. The planning department came along and said, look, we want to go to a four-meter driveway to enhance the landscaping along the front. We agreed to that, so we've reduced the front driveway width to four meters from six meters, and this would then provide more green space in front of the house. There are some mature trees about the perimeter along St. Patrick and O'Neill, and they're on city property, so we have no intention of removing them. I think that would be done at great risk. So having said most of these, most of the points that I've mentioned, again, we try to keep the low profile, the residential feel of the building, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the council members would have or...
Thank you. Mr. Cristelli, members of council, Councilor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, and I guess, Your Worship, that I'll ask Mr. Cristelli, thanks for being here, the same questions I've asked Mr. Bolbruck, and those were in regards to the orientation of buildings and, I guess, keeping the designation of one of the properties, the one that abuts single-family residential as R1C, and actually moving the other one to R2.
Yeah, there are items in the zoning bylaw that require a 20-meter on the exterior lot. It requires a 20-meter frontage, and I believe the interior one was 18 meters that we had to, that's the minimum that we had to apply to it, and we did it. And the other way, if you flip them over to O'Neill, it kind of landlocks the one back corner of the lot to the north, and it doesn't, I don't know that that would have met the criteria of the required width of the property, the 20 meters and the 18 meters. The other thing was, there was mention of the safety factor. There is a lot of traffic along O'Neill when the high school is operating. Right now, they're off on two-month summer break, so I'm sure that traffic has slowed down from that aspect, from the school perspective. But we were concerned about the safety coming in and out of O'Neill. It seems to be more of a main artery, and the St. Patricks would be easier flow in and out, into the semis and out of the semis. And basically, that's why we selected going with that orientation.
Thanks, Your Worship. And I guess through you again and Mr. Cristelli, if you're not willing to change the orientation, then what about the designation of the property? Are you willing to keep R1, abutted with R1?
So that would mean a semi on the exterior side yard and a single-family where the semi's shown on the interior yard. Yeah. We would entertain that, we're certainly not against it, but I think this would be, from a planning point of view, I think that this would be a better development for the owner. However, we would entertain doing the single-family, abutting the single-family, leave it as R1C, put a single detached dwelling unit in, and then do the semi on the corner. I think that could be manageable.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Mr. Cristelli? Okay. Public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. There's no further submissions. Does member of the council want to make a motion to this proposal? Councilor Peter Angelo.
Your Worship, I understand that the residents don't want any R2 zoning in their area. Yes, I understand that the residents don't want any R2 zoning in their area at all, but I also understand that, I mean, there are certain provincial policies, there's regional and city policies that are in place that do allow for intensification. A lot of times, that's the problem that I have with those policies, is that if I ignore them at council, then there is another governing body that can make a decision on these properties, and that would be the Ontario Municipal Board. And, Your Worship, I would hate to see this application go to the Ontario Municipal Board and then both properties receive an R2 designation, and that's why I asked Mr. Cristelli, who asked the landowner whether or not he would be willing to at least keep R1 designation beside R1. I think it's a compromise, Your Worship. In that sense, then, there is an R2 zoning on O'Neill right now, and R2 would abut R2, and then there is R1 all along St. Patrick, and R1 would abut R1. So I would make the motion, and the motion would then change to say that the lot that's directly on the corner of O'Neill and St. Patrick, be designated as R2, and the other one that's on St. Patrick alone be designated or remain as R1.
Okay, do you have a motion? Do we have a second or? Councilor Mays? Seconded. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Councilor Ziononi?
Thank you, Mr. Diodati, Council Mayor Diodati. I think they're beautiful houses, and they're absolutely gorgeous semis, but just not for this neighborhood. I think if you open the door to put one semi there, the gentleman who said in a number of years, when retirees are going to retire, you've opened the door for semis all around. It doesn't make sense to me that you can have one semi and it doesn't change the outlook of the neighborhood, but you can't have two. So either, I would think either turn it down, which I was going to do, because I was going to vote against it, because I just, I walked through that, my kids went to Meyer, that's such a beautiful neighborhood, I can't imagine changing the face like that. So I'm going to vote against the motion and just say, I don't think it fits in there.
Counselor Wing?
Yes, I'm still not comfortable either. As we heard in the verbal submissions tonight, and we've seen in the written submissions before us, this is a special area, and this is something that the municipal heritage committee has long recognized. In fact, the municipal heritage committee had recommended studying this area for heritage district designation under Part 5 of the Ontario Heritage Act. St. Catherine's has a number of heritage districts, Yates Street, Port Delusie, Queen's Street, we don't have a one, and this is definitely one of the areas that was to be considered. St. Patrick Avenue is one of the most historic streets in that area. There are already two properties on that street designated under Part 4 of the Heritage Act, and the people in the areas, we've already seen, recognize what a special area it is, and those street signs that were referred to weren't paid for by the city, those were special street signs, bought and paid for by the citizens of the area who fundraised the money for them, because they wanted, knowing that that area was so special. And I too fear the inroads and the, you know, changes in the character. Now, the residents who wrote in spoke very eloquently about that, a unique historical mix of homes and mature trees, and just the overall look of the street. I was actually thinking about, I know we just deferred a major matter, but I was thinking maybe we should defer this and ask the proponents to work with the neighborhood and find, try and come up with a compromise that's mutually acceptable to everybody and something that will blend better with the character of the area, not just the zoning, but also the materials and the style, you know, something that will be compatible and sympathetic to it. So, I don't know, maybe that's what I'll do, just throw a motion for deferral on the floor and see if we can get that to happen instead.
Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion for deferral by Counselor Wing. Do we have a second or to that motion?
Before I second it, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
My only concern in regards to Counselor Peter Angelo's compromise is, the application before us is not for a single-family home and a semi. The application before us is for two semis. Does that not make it a different application? But can we switch the application on the fly like that? I just, that's not what's before me.
Mr. Beeman?
Counselor can change, can change the application during the public meeting as long as they did during the public meeting.
Okay. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, when I first heard that the application was in this area, historic area, my immediate reaction is, I can't support it, and I won't support it. However, looking at the location across from the school, and particularly with the questions asked by Counselor Peter Angelo to the applicant, who is very willing to adjust the application and keep single-family together and a duplex on the corner, and the corner is across from a very busy school, I had to give this further thought. And the idea of how planning has changed in the last several years, where we are mandated as a council to intensify any kind of development, and I was very vocal, in fact, made the motion on an application at the corner of St. Paul and down...
Givina? In Moretta?
In Moretta subdivision, yes, for a duplex on the corner because of the objections of the people in the area. It was appealed to the OMB, and it was approved, just like that. So my concern is that we have an opportunity and the flexibility of the applicant to lessen this application and preserve what is there and what should be preserved. I think if this is turned down, there'll be an appeal to the OMB, and somebody's going to end up with two semis on those two lots. So I think that this is probably a very reasonable compromise. I'm surprised that the applicant would agree to that so quickly, and I think that's an opportunity, because if you have this appeal, the OMB will approve that in a heartbeat, in my opinion. So I think I will support the change in application.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship, and just to add to that, I appreciate Counselor Thompson's comments, because I guess my thought process is along the same lines, and if I was confident that the OMB would not give designation or would not give the semi-detached designation to these pieces of property, then I'd have no problems turning it down. But with the provincial policies that are in place, with the regional, and as well as the city intensification policies that are in place, I just don't have that confidence. And I know that if it goes to the OMB, that they're both going to become semi-detached dwellings, and I just don't want to see that happen. And that's why I asked the developer the question, would you at least allow R1 to be alongside R1? And I think it's a good compromise, and I will support the motion.
Fair enough. Counselor Gates?
Yeah, Mayor Diodati, just to the residents, you had said you had a petition of 70-some people, maybe you could respond to the same question that Victor had asked the developer, would you be interested in the rezoning? And maybe go to Mike and at least respond to that to give us an idea of where the citizens would be after you've heard what Counselor Thompson said, Counselor Peter Angelo, who obviously have been around this table a long time, so appreciate that, thank you.
I guess I'm pretty passionate about it, because it's my property right next to the proposed development of the two semis. When I was talking to the people in the area, St. Patrick, Russell, St. George, never once did I ask them, well, what about a compromise? It was, nobody wants semis for a bunch of reasons. They think that, Mr. Dwyer said it, in the future, perhaps people tear down the house. I know there's an empty lot at the end of the street that's owned by the man that owns the heritage house, Mr. Brown, if someone wants to develop that. Nobody wants semis next to them when you live in a nice residential area. I mean, if you lived in Mount Carmel or Calagiro or Cherrywood Acres or any of those nice, and there's an empty lot beside you, would you want a semi next to you? That's the question I pose. Now that it's come to the compromise, you know, I would like to see no semis, but I mean, what you make, what you say makes sense in terms of if it goes to the OMB, because I mean, I too can appeal if you deny the absence, I can appeal to the OMB. I know it's a form, it's $125, you know, and I've looked into it too, but I guess it's a compromise. I don't know if, you know, the applicant, Mr. Saboda, will in fact, you know, stop there, because I fear for, you know, semis. I know the intensification, but there's subdivisions that allow for that intensification, you know, they build into the new subdivisions, green space, semis, single-family, all that. This is historic Sanford Center, so I hate to see it go to semis. And just as a point of interest, the property on O'Neill Street that is zoned, that's a semi now, that is illegal, but it was done in 1959, and it's, it would be, if I complained about that, it would be legal nonconforming, because it was done in 1959, the address is A and a B. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Are there any other councillors that have a comment or question? Is it Mr. Cristelli, or did you want to?
It's just a clarification that I want to make, that the property to the west of the zoning amendment is, was, it was prior to 1979. As of 1956, it was deemed, at that time, it was allowed a single-family or a semi. That's what the zoning was. And as the zoning changed in 1979, it became illegal nonconforming use, but it was legal before 1979. So I just wanted to clarify that. That's what I found out.
Great, thank you.
From city records.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Okay, we have a motion to approve an amended version of the application being... I'm sorry? Or we've got to know, actually, no, we do have a motion for deferring.
There was no second or to the motion for deferral.
So you didn't, okay. All right, so we do have a motion. We've got a motion before council to change the application so that we've got a semi on the corner, and then we'll have a single-family just north of that. All those in favor? Two, three, four, five, it passes. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, next up, I have my mayor's report and announcements. I know that's why the place is packed today, you're all here to hear my announcements, so that's good. I'll try to make them brief.
I knew you could make announcements when you've been on vacation all week.
I see that getting paid up.
First up, video clip highlighting the opening of the museum. Some of you may have seen this already on Code JCO. We've got an absolutely exciting video clip that's been created for the museum, that's been running on Code JCO. We're all very excited about the upcoming opening of our newly renovated interactive Niagara Falls History Museum, and as you know, the 1812 Legacy Project is a large part to commemorate the bicentennial of the War of 1812 here in Niagara Falls. Our new museum on Ferry Street is 70% complete. We're planning to open it up next summer. The video's been generously created with the help of DA Media. It's a state-of-the-art media company right here in Niagara Falls. We're very excited, they're doing absolutely breakthrough technology, and they're right here in Niagara Falls. When you watch Code JCO, watch for the video of the opening of our new historic museum. It's really fascinating work. Also graduations, it's been my pleasure to be at a number of high school graduations in the last week. Congratulations to all the graduates. We're really happy and we're proud of you, and we just remind you, make sure when you're successful, come back to Niagara Falls. The NHS rally, we want to thank, first of all, Counselor Gates for his efforts to organize the rally. This month, it was a lot of success. Also want to thank Counselors Ziononi, Counselor Thompson, and Counselor Mays for coming out to the rally. It was on short, and Counselor Wing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It was on short notice, but it was spirited, and we certainly got the attention of the national media, and it's good. That's sometimes what you need, you need a little bit of attention from the national media. Also Canada Day, just want to thank all the volunteers and all the staff that worked so hard to organize our Canada Day parade today, or this year, rather, as we march toward Optimist Park. National Veterans Rendezvous, we'd like to thank Mike Blaze and the Winter Festival of Lights and their volunteers for doing an outstanding job. July the 8th to the 10th, we honored all the veterans and we honored the end of mission in Afghanistan, and we had the Minister of Defense here. It was a very fitting tribute to the veterans who put their tomorrows on the line so that us and our kids could have our tomorrows. I'd also like to announce and let everybody know that through our clerk's office, our August council meetings have been changed. The two originally scheduled meetings have been canceled and replaced with one meeting to be held on August the 15th. Those conclude my announcements tonight. Next up, our communications and comments of the city clerk. First issue up, we've got Napoli Restaurant and Pizzeria, they're requesting an on-street parking on Regional Road. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, we run into this situation all the time where we have the region under control of the parking, and we have local businesses who are attempting to stay alive. That particular area is very short of parking as it exists at the present time. The road widening hasn't changed, it's been the same for many, many years, and turning of vehicles, larger vehicles, has existed over that period of time. I think there were three or four parking spaces in front of the Napoli and also the Sicilian Gardens, and without that parking, those businesses are going to suffer. And I think it's our responsibility to support our local business community, and I went through the same situation with a business up in a block closer to the main and Ferry, and fortunately, there was some reduction, but the parking stalls were retained in that particular area. So I think we have a responsibility to support the local business in this particular area and carry it from here through our staff and through yourself, and hopefully our regional councillors, to make sure the, I could see one space the closest to the corner might be eliminated, but at least to retain the three or four which are very adjacent to that, to support the local businesses. So I would move that we put all the initiatives to attempt to do that through our staff, through the region, through yourself, at the regional council, to make that happen.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Thompson to ask the region to reconsider the elimination of the four parking spots in front of Napoli, perhaps to remove one for safety concern, but reconsideration of the other three. We have a second or by Counselor Wing. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, your worship. The writer, or the gentleman who wrote the letter, Mr. Pingyu is in the audience, and I was wondering whether or not he wished to have the opportunity to address counsel.
Mr. Pingyu, did you want to add to the motion that we have on the floor already?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. You heard our councilman, Wayne Thompson, without to repeat him any question, I'm a very, myself, and Sicilia Restaurant, very upset about removing the parking. We appreciate your cooperation to this. We are willing to go to one parking spot which we feel it's kind of danger too close to the road. But since this all happened, it's been a lot of confusion, as you know. I did read a lot about it, the regional council, when you both the city and regional merge together, as far as X C, I read it quite a bit. It does not point out anywhere that the director, one of the regional, has the right to remove a parking space which has been there over forty-five years. And also, the accident that he claims, when we had a meeting at my place, he cannot tell me which accident was the cause because the car are parked there. In five years, thirty-eight accident. Mostly, do we notice ourselves, or in right on the middle of the road, the intersection? But if they happened during the night, I don't know, that, I cannot say anything about that. But other than that, because of the parking there, I cannot, I never witnessed an accident. Eleven years that I've been there. And also, I asked the Sicilia, which has been there for many years, way before me, and they also said the same thing. So therefore, I'd like to say thank you to the council, to all of you, and I really appreciate it very much. And Janice Wing sent me all of the information, was never any intention to remove those parking spots, along that worked on the project to renovate Ferry Street. And I thank you the city council, and all the citizens naturally, the money which is being spent on Ferry Street, Landis Lane, it's a beautiful job. And for, that's thanks to everyone who participates. But the citizen are the most important for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pingyu. We've got Counselor Carroll, Counselor Wing?
Thank you, your worship. I'm certainly going to support the motion. There's no question in my mind that those parking spots are very important to those few businesses, especially the restaurant on the corner, your worship. As a matter of fact, that's where I park when I go there. So now, I've got to try and find another spot. But I'm sure that the region is not prepared to drop Mr. Pingyu's taxes if his business suffers. So I think we can do everything we can do to get those parking spots back. There aren't a lot of parking there.
Yeah, you're right. Counselor Wing?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to comment that Mr. Pingyu's son, Anthony, is very active in the main and ferry BIA, he's the vice president, or vice chair again this term, and he hosted some of the public meetings. In fact, he hosted the one at which the construction schedule is decided on to accommodate the needs of the businesses outside the BIA. And so it seems like a really unfair situation for this to happen now. I just wanted to point out the correspondence from staff saying, you know, since the road width wasn't changing, it was assumed that the parking would not be changing, and our staff don't know why the region didn't inform anybody prior to the construction. It was a total surprise to everyone. This is important, not just Napoli, but the Sicilian Garden next door as well. And, you know, a lot of times, when there's traffic problems, we put in chicanes and boulevards to create impediments to speeding cars and slow things down, calm the traffic. As someone who lives on a busy street, I can tell you parked cars do the same sort of thing. So keeping the parking stalls there or reinstating them, which is what we really want to see, will help to calm traffic in the area. Removing them is going to only speed things up and make the situation worse, I think.
I think it's got to be frustrating, too, that we had a proposal presented, and they put the onus on you to find the changes. I think they should highlight the changes. You know, don't let us have to find them by accident. It's an unfortunate situation that we've come to this point where, like you say, a local merchant has to go through this kind of frustration, especially there's limited parking in that area. So we have a motion on the floor for a support letter from this council, go to the region, asking for reconsideration of the parking elimination. I'll call the motion, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you, your worship. All members of the council, Mr. Wayne Thompson to make the motion in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Pingyu. Next up, item two, Ross and McBride requesting on behalf of their client, the Mueller Group, an opportunity to voice their concerns regarding the proposed Niagara Falls soccer indoor facility. What is the will of this council? Counselor Gates?
Sure, let him speak.
Okay. Second by Counselor Wing. All those in favor? Okay. All right, Mr. Mueller, or your agent, if you would like to approach and state your name?
Thank you, your worship, Mayor DiDatti, members of council. My name is Eric Cunningham. I provide marketing counsel for Henry Mueller's companies, and I'm appearing on behalf of his lawyer, Peter Tice, who could not be here with us tonight. With me, of course, is Henry Mueller, his chief financial officer, Martin Levy, and Chris McCarty behind me, the manager of the Niagara Falls Sports Plex. At the outset, your worship, we want you to know that the Niagara Falls Sports Plex and Mr. Mueller personally are strongly committed to youth soccer in Niagara Falls. The Sports Plex has been an excellent facility for winter and spring youth soccer for a number of years. Starting in September 1st of 2011, the Sports Plex is open again to the public every day from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 in the evening. While it is well utilized, including special events, golf, parties, it does not operate on a profitable basis. The construction of a new P3 indoor soccer facility as proposed by the Niagara Falls Soccer Club, however well-intentioned, will result in two-money-losing facilities. It is our belief that the Niagara Falls Sports Plex can accommodate both boys' and girls' indoor soccer needs. Simply put, no young person in Niagara Falls wanting to play indoor soccer in the winter will be denied. Mr. Mueller has been in business in Niagara Falls since 1948. He pays $750,000 per year in municipal taxes. He has, as I hope you would know, a deep commitment to Niagara Falls. Like many taxpayers, he was troubled to learn about the tentative approval of the Niagara Falls Soccer Club indoor facility in the Niagara Falls Review. It is equally concerning to read that local taxpayers may be committing a $1 million grant to this new indoor soccer proposal. In reviewing the proceedings of the June 13th council meeting, it was unclear if a business plan was part of the submission by the Niagara Falls Soccer Club. Likewise, there was no identification of the $750,000 naming rights sponsors. It was equally unclear if the Niagara Falls Soccer Club tabled any indication of their financial capability to operate such a facility in the future. Commitments such as a $1 million capital investment should be part of the kind of process, the public process inherent in the development of your parks and recreation strategic plan, if council's going to be fair to all parks and recreation users. Mr. Tice, in his letter to you, makes reference to the request by the Niagara Falls Soccer Club to have both the city and the Niagara region development charges waived. Most fair-minded people would agree that such a decision would create a serious precedent. In a time that's transpired since your June 13th, 2011 council meeting, it appears from an article in the June, sorry, the July Niagara Falls, July 16th Niagara Falls Review, that the capital costs on this project may now, may now exceed $6 million. Mr. Mayor, there's more that binds us than divides us on this issue. Mr. Mueller and everyone involved at the Niagara Falls Sports Plex are committed to provide access to the entire soccer public. We urge you to give this matter very serious and careful reconsideration. Mr. Mueller has asked me to express his total commitment to work with the people at the Niagara Falls Soccer Club, who have been good tenants over the past several years. Working together, we believe that we can enhance the utilization of the Niagara Falls Sports Plex while at the same time avoiding a $1 million capital exposure to the citizens of Niagara Falls and possible operating exposure going forward. Thank you, those are our comments, and we're grateful to have this opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Cunningham of, from the council? No questions at all? Okay. In fairness, in balance, did you want to talk?
Soccer.
Okay, yeah, in fairness, we would maybe ask one representative from the soccer club, if I could get a motion? Yeah, okay, moved by Counselor Angelo, second by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, so we could have one representative from the soccer club approach the microphone if we have someone ready to speak? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you all for allowing me to come up here and speak. I can't believe that I have to come through this again, but obviously, we know the commitment that Mr. Mueller has made to soccer and the city. The place is up for sale. It's been for sale for months. Tried to sell it to us for $4 million. Not healthy environment, doesn't meet O S A standards. We need something that we can move forward with on our own, with the intent of doing most of the fundraising on our own. I believe that this P3 program was an absolute perfect fit for this program that we would like to apply for. I believe that I've submitted everything to council, to staff, that has been required from the Niagara Falls Soccer Club on our behalf. Naming rights? Niagara Olympia Homes, George Body, he's naming the facility. I sat in a meeting a few months back with Mr. Mueller, and he told me, George Body, who's George Body? He can't even afford to pay his bills. He's got no money? Niagara Olympia Homes is building, is naming the facility. We have many other opportunities, sir, if you would like to jump in on it all.
Okay, please direct the comments this way, Mr. Chamberlain.
Also, we expected this resistance because he told me to, basically to my face, that he was going to put up the fight. So we, the truth of the matter is that Mr. Mueller is threatened by our club's facility because it simply cuts into the profit margin. He's a businessman. I've been there seven years, guys have been there over 20 years, all volunteers were non-for-profit. We are to promote soccer, children, healthy environment, social skills within Niagara Falls, the city of Niagara Falls.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would just ask if you could refrain from this because we just, one second, Mr. Chamberlain.
Sure.
We would just ask, we just want to have professional and decorum in the room, if you don't mind, we just want to keep a balanced approach. We know you're very passionate, we know why you're here. If we can just try to keep it, if you don't mind, save it for outside, then you can cheer all you want.
Obviously, you see the reason why we need this facility. Comments that were made in the review? I told the review three times, it's Niagara Olympia Homes, Niagara Olympia Homes, Niagara Olympia Homes, misprint Olympia Homes. I also said to the gentleman, as I was standing in the middle of Berkeley Field and St. Catherine's watching one of our 10-year-old teams play, that 25 cents on the dollar for a $4 million building, realistically, when this whole thing is said and done, our second phase, I'm expecting this project, down the road, if we add the addition with the basketball, closer to about a $6 million property. That's what it'll be worth. It's not a bad investment for 25 cents on the $4 million, as a million dollars, which the city may, good chance get their money back. Also was stated that we only utilize 20 hours a week in Niagara Sports Plex. I've got all kinds of documentation here from all the coaches. We ran a 20-hour-a-week program for 24 weeks. It's very simple to do the math, 120 grand, and numerous. 582-plus hours were rented by our travel coaches. So there is a demand for this facility. Terra Power rankings, top 10 cities, soccer. We're just about there. All the other 10 cities have indoor facilities, proper indoor soccer structures. So I'm proud to announce that Niagara Olympia Homes has purchased the naming rights, Recreation and Education Center is what we're going to provide for the community of Niagara Falls. And with that, if I, if there's any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr.? Yes, Counselor Ayenoni? Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Counselor Ayenoni?
Thank you. I called the clerk, I called our finance and our C A O today just to ask questions in regards to Mr. Mueller's letter. And my understanding is, you just said that you've provided the city staff with everything you think they wanted.
Everything they've asked for.
Well, I called today, I asked, have you submitted a financial plan? And they said, no. Have you submitted a business plan? They said, no. Do they, do they have particulars on your banking and your financing? They said, no. Was there a payment schedule or repayment agreement agreed to? They said, no. So I'm just curious, when does all that come to the city? Because I understand council approved the million dollars, but those would be stipulations you have to follow. So those are things the city staff told me today that they need, that they don't have yet?
Right.
Okay, so you just said you-
And they've asked, they've asked and said that they were going to set up a meeting, that we are going to submit all this documentation to staff, and we're still waiting for that meeting.
But you have all that documentation to provide staff and council?
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
And the financing is set in place. And also, another thing, that I never expected the city, the city to hand us the million dollars until we broke ground and we met all the expectations and obligations that were required on our end. So it's not just a handout.
Mr. Chamberlain, nobody said it was. I'm saying, you said you've provided staff-
There's a lot of misinformation going around.
So when I call and ask for all this information this morning, and it's told to me they don't have that yet, and I think you need to clarify that at this meeting for Mr. Mueller, because that was also in his letter.
Okay.
Also, we'd like to ask our C A O to make some comments.
Mr. Mayor, just a bit of clarification, just so council is aware, it was our intention, our staff had met with Mr. Chamberlain, we're going to have another meeting. Our intention is to have a report back to this council on the 15th, that's our next meeting, clarifying all of the information for council on the financing, any of the payment schedules and all of that. So that's what we're aiming towards, and I hope we'll have that report back for you on August the 15th.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Chamberlain? Okay, yeah, Counselor Gates?
I actually don't have one to Mr. Chamberlain, I have one for Mr. Beeman. As far as report coming back to council, I had called a couple weeks ago, like to know if this is bonusing under the municipal act as well, so if we have that, or you could answer it tonight if you can, but I think that's one question I've been asked, and I don't have an answer to it, so.
Okay, well, I can answer it right now, as I did the first time you asked the question. And that is this, this organization is not a commercial organization, is not in business to make a profit. Bonusing only occurs when the responding party is a commercial organization. Were it not for that stipulation, the act, the council, for example, couldn't make a grant to a hospital. Or to, like an amateur hockey organization, or to send some kid to the Olympics who's looking for money to help them get there. That's the difference, the distinction the law makes. This is, this is, this organization presents itself to the council, and I have no reason to doubt them, as a nonprofit organization that's organized to provide soccer for children, and as such, they are, the council can give money to them and not risk running afoul of the bonusing laws. Okay? Any other questions? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I just wanted to say that it's impossible for this to be perceived as bonusing. It's not uncommon, or it's not without the realm of this council, to give money to nonprofit organizations in our city. I mean, the last one that we gave money to was the Boys and Girls Club, we gave them $2 million, and we continue to give them an operating grant of over $200,000 a year. The one before that was the Gale Center, where we invested $35 million, and we have an operating loss of $1.2 million every year, so that's a good donation back to the users. Before that, it was the Kayler Road Sports Park on Kayler Road, which is the cross home for soccer. We made over a $1 million investment. We put another $500,000 into the clubhouse. We have full-time staff there. We pay for all the maintenance and all the improvements there. And the one before that was the Community Center, where we, where we made an investment of- of $15 million plus the donation of the land. And we continue to do all the maintenance and improvements at that facility. On top of that, that's what we do for these nonprofit organizations. We maintain all their parks, we buy them new lighting, we buy them new equipment, we help with the construction of clubhouses. It's not without the realm of council. So, I mean, it isn't bonusing in any manner. And this council has voted unanimously in the past to do it again and again and again.
Mr. Beeman, just in following along with Councilor Peter Angelo's observations, that is the test. It is, bonusing occurs when public money is given to a commercial organization, profit-making organization. Bonusing does not occur when public money is given to a nonprofit organization. And that's the distinction. And council is free to make grants to nonprofit organizations, and Councilor Peter Angelo has provided numerous examples. And what I cited was the hospital. That's a nonprofit organization that council contributes to, and so that's the distinction that council can't, as long as they're satisfied, this is a nonprofit organization, and certainly their history has been that, and there's no reason to doubt them, that I'm aware of. There's no reason why, from a point of view of risking bonusing, that is not a reason for not providing this, this money. This would not be a bonus to nonprofit organization on the evidence we have at this time.
That's great, thank you. Councilor Carrion?
Um, for a topic, unless you finish talking about bonusing?
Yeah, we're good, I think we can.
Your worship, I certainly appreciate all the work Mr. Chamberlain does for his group. I just wouldn't be too hard on Mr. Mueller. I sympathize with Mr. Mueller as well. He's a taxpayer in the city, and whether he likes it or not, if this council decides to invest, or we have decided that we're gonna help this group, Mr. Mueller is unwillingly
It was my mayor's announcements.
gonna be a contributor to you as well.
All right, next on the reports, we've got the bird strike, North America requesting
So, he's gonna be helping your group just as much as any other business person in the community. So, I don't know what goes on in the past, I don't know the situation between your group
funding. Okay, moved by Councilor Iannoni, seconded by Councilor Maves to receive and file.
and Mr. Mueller. Not really interested.
All those in favor?
Appreciate what you do, and I'm prepared to help as much as I can for your people and
Okay, it's unanimous. Item four, Victoria Center BIA, moved by Councilor Iannoni, seconded by Councilor Morocco,
your, and your soccer. But let's not be too hard on Mr. Mueller, because he is a good taxpayer, he's been a
that we approve their 2011 budget.
good taxpayer for many, many years, and he will be contributing to your situation and
All those in favor?
And change their council rep.
Yeah, and change their council rep.
to your facility.
Okay. All right, we're looking for a motion to receive and file. Additional items for council's consideration, Mr. Clerk? Motion by Councilor Maves, seconded by Councilor Morocco.
Sir, your worship, no additional communications, but we neglected the in-camera listing on
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
the agenda, so I suggest we deal with that now.
Councilor Gates, are you in favor? Okay, so we will now deal with the in-camera meter, meeting, our issue?
I am, yeah.
Okay, all, that's unanimous then. Thank you very much. [applause]
Yes. Do you want to make a motion that effect?
Uh, yes.
I would make the motion that the in-camera regarding the people mover system and the agreement from the BIAs be approved and proceed to finalize the issue with the Niagara Parks Commission.
Okay, moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Morocco. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you.
Sir, your worship, I did neglect one other item in your additions this evening, was a memo from Carl Dren, the Director of Transportation Services, related to the inter-municipal transit system. And in that memo, staff is recommending approval of, I guess it's a three-phase approach with regard to how that's gonna be implemented, and we'd be sending those comments off to the region.
And as a matter of fact, it would happen very quickly, since we're gonna be discussing this tomorrow at Municipal Works at the region. So, Mr. Dren, our Director of Transportation and, is he, oh, Merzain is here, okay. Ms. Carrick did, and Dave's here too, okay, who's gonna, all right, we've got, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Carrick, would one of you like to maybe just give a quick, real abbreviated version of what we're proposing and why we're proposing it? Rock, paper, scissors, or, okay, you're gonna do it?
Um, I can provide you a brief overview. If you look at the chart structure that's provided as part of the memo, there's three scenarios that are outlined, and these are three scenarios out of many, many scenarios that were discussed with the region, and this has been, these fare structures have been talked about and met upon for, for quite some time. The region is suggesting that scenario one is the fare structure that be implemented, and this is the one that I understand that they will be pursuing to put forth through their meeting tomorrow morning. Overall, this suggests that the fare structure would be primarily a $5 flat rate, but the re, the city would only be having a return of $1.25 through that flat fare. Our staffs looked through that and we've decided that that was not quite what we were looking for, so there were, out of the other scenarios that were provided, scenario seven, which provides a flat fare of $5 as well, which is what the region was suggesting initially, however, there's a return of $2 for each fare to the city. The city is suggesting that that is fair, and that's also subsequent to discussions, and Fordy is online with that, and we're suggesting that that be a promotional rate for approximately four to six months. After that, it appears that to have a, a rate that is comparable, the rate would need to be $6 for the flat rate, and as well, a $2 return to the city. Now, the $2 return, it's actually a subsidized rate already. Our rate currently is $2.50 is what we, what we are required to get back from that $5 and $6, so we would be subsidizing it by 50 cents already, as opposed to the $1.25 rate only as suggested by the region. So, what we're requesting is that council endorse staff's position of the scenarios to be provided to the region tomorrow.
Are there any questions of Ms. Carrick in regard to the proposal for the region? This is for the inter-municipal transit. Remember, they brought this forward, they wanna, they've got a three-year pilot, and the big debate was around pricing. Apparently, the consultant at the region has said that if it's more than $5, it won't get the ridership. And they're real sensitive around the $5. So, basically, you'll be able to get on a bus in Niagara Falls, in Chippewa, and get to Port DeLuise for five bucks. So, that'll involve a couple of transits, including the region, so it'll go from the city to St. Kitts, right to Port DeLuise for five bucks. And the proposals eventually, we're suggesting that $6 is more of a recovery, although no transit makes money, they all lose money, but it's less. And the other thing that our Director of Transportation is strong on is that it be a fair split, because it's generally gonna be two cities. It'll be Niagara Falls and St. Kitts, Niagara Falls and Welland, or a combination of those three cities. So, that'd be a three-way split between the region. So, there, the goal is to get it as close as we can to an even split. And the original one had a disproportional amount going toward the region, and that was Carl's position. And so, they've put together, spent a lot of time putting together a formula that, that tries to achieve the objective of as much cost recovery as manageable, but at the same time, an even split. The other thing of interest too is, right now, the region does pay some cab fare for some people to get to their jobs, and this would be a less expensive alternative if they could use bus fare to help people get to their, their place of employment. So, this, tomorrow morning at 9:30, we're gonna be dealing with this at Municipal Works. Apologize, it's coming right down to the wire, but this is just the way the negotiations have been ongoing right through the weekend and this morning. So, Carl put this together on Friday for our council packages. So, is there any discussion on it? We're looking for an approval from the council that I can take this into Municipal Works. Councilor Iannoni, seconded by Councilor Morocco, is there any other discussion on the report? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Consent agenda? Is there any, anybody want any specific issue dealt with? Councilor Gates?
Yeah. MW 21135, the Warren Creek Channel Construction Contract Tender Award.
Okay, you want that one pulled out?
Just pull it out, please.
Okay, I'll pull it out. Is there anything else anyone wants pulled?
Move the rest.
Okay, move the rest, Councilor Carrick.
I just had one question.
Uh, yes?
I'll ask you, you know what, I'll, I'll ask your people. PD 201148, please.
1148, okay. That's yours too? Okay. Is there any other reports that you'd like pulled? Okay, so move the rest, Councilor Carrion, seconded by Councilor Maves. All those in favor? All right, so we'll start off with MW 21135, Warren Creek Channel Construction Contract. Councilor Gates?
Yeah, I just got a, a couple of comments, and I'd like to address Mr. Beeman. The, just so I'm, I'm, I understand what this is all about, is, this goes back to the $2 million that was approved by the majority of council a couple of weeks ago. And then, over and above that, it is now gonna cost us, that was the purchase of the land, my understanding, now, over and above that, we're now gonna spend 1.720 on a channel construction through the tender process. Is that kinda where we're at? Because I'm trying to figure out the, the amount of money that we've given to the Grassy Brook, Fernwood, and Warren Creek, and I believe it's with the interest payments, that would now take us to around $20 million. So, I just want to make sure that I'm correct. So, that's what that is. We approved the $2 million at the council meeting, either the last council meeting or the council before. This is 1.7 now that, that we bought the land from the developer. We're now gonna spend 1.7 to do the channel of construction, which is for the three developers that are in that area or more. And over and above that, we did the pumping stations out there, which cost us 12 million. And when I took a look at the 2010 debt charges from, that I had asked for earlier, I'm hoping I read it right, I think it's 6 million or 5 and 1/2 million. I just want to make sure that the amount of money that we're giving out there, I'm, I'm correct on. Maybe somebody could address that, maybe I'm wrong on that, and I just, I just want to make sure I got those figures relatively close.
Yeah, we'll ask either the CIO or the Director of Municipal Works to answer that one.
Um, I, Mr. Mayor, I trust the counselor's math that are, the, the projects he listed are some of the projects that have been extended to improve the area in the Garner neighborhood. We have spent money on upgrading Kayla Road and McCloud Road as well, if we could put those numbers all into the mix. All of these projects were identified in the calculation of our development charges and all works that have to be done. There's many more millions of dollars that have to be done to bring the road system up to speed, and those projects will be listed in our next development charge bylaw when it comes due in 2014.
The CIO would like to ask, why do I-
If I could just help put this in perspective for the council, and if you look at the location map that's in your agenda, it's a colored sheet showing within the report. Put, to put perspective on the Warren Creek Channelization Project, that creek is assisting with all of the flow of stormwater in the Stormwater Management Plan for all of the development north of McCloud Road. So, it's all the way up to Lundys Lane. So, it's really not, this piece here, we really need to do to be able to free up additional development that's north of McCloud Road. There currently was a, lack of better words, freeze on some lots up there because the current stormwater pond, which is beside St. Michael's High School, was at capacity. So, in order to let that development continue, this channel really needs to be built to free up that additional growth that can take place to the north. So, it's not just the development in this area, it's pretty well everything south of Lundys Lane and right down to Brown Road. So, that's the whole catchment area for this channelization creek.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I guess, I guess the, where I've been going with this for, since I got on council, is that I believe that, that, that cost, or certainly a majority of that cost should, should be done by the developers and not necessarily on the, the backs of the taxpayers. And I understand we're gonna get it from development charges on a go-forward basis, but at the end of the day, that's, could be eight years, could be 12 years, could be 15, I'm not really sure of the timeframe before you collect those funds. Hopefully, in the future, we, we take a serious look at it. I did ask Mr. Beeman to see if this was bonusing, and to Mr. Beeman's comment during the soccer club was here, I had never asked him if the soccer club was bonusing, I had asked him about this particular project, and his comments were that it wasn't. I appreciate him getting back to me and sending it off to council as well. But on this particular, I voted against the $2 million a little while ago, and I'll certainly be feeling the same way on this.
Mr. Mayor, I just have to clarify the comment. With all due respect, counselor, this, this development is not on the back of the taxpayers. All of the money that goes towards the purchase of the land and this tender here is coming from development charges. So, development pays for development. So, that is included, as Mr. Holman had indicated, was included in our calculation for the development charges bylaw. So, our development charge fee on every lot that's developed in that area will go to pay for not only the land purchase, but also for the land, the construction that you're awarding the tender for tonight. So, it's not, it's not on our tax base, it's coming out of development charges.
Well, can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Because I certainly like being educated. At the, at the end of the day, I believe, and maybe you can correct me, because I don't know a lot of communities that actually do this kinda stuff, where we actually, in my eyes, supported some developers that owned some of the land already, and said we're gonna collect it with development fees. I had this conversation with Mr. Todd before. I'm not sure that's the way we should be doing development fees. I don't think we should be borrowing from a bank of, and I believe it was, and you guys can correct me, because I wasn't here then, somewhere between 10 and 12 million dollars, paying the lowest interest rate, whatever that is, it could be 4.5 or 5, I'm not sure that, and at the end of the day, those development fees are still gonna pay 5 or 6 or 7 million dollars to a banking institution, instead of putting it back into our community out of development fees, to your point, Mr. Todd, and I certainly appreciate the, let me know that. But at the end of the day, I'm not sure that's something that we should be doing on a go-forward basis. I think it's something that this council should take another look at, and that's why I've been very consistent on how I feel about this. I think it's something we should be taking a look at, and I guess, I've asked Mr. Todd, and I haven't got it yet, and I enjoy talking to Mr. Todd, on the fact that how many other communities, this is how they do it. And I think it's something that we've, we've gotta have a debate on. It's a lot of money, and I think some of that money could have been used up in different places, and quite frankly, I think some of this should have been done by the developer. They bought the land, it's their land, and some of the stuff that has to get done there, I think the developer should be paying. And if you take a look at, I'll just leave it at that without-
But I do appreciate Mr. Todd's comments, that's for sure. Thank you, and we do have some good conversations.
Yes, we do, I enjoy them, actually.
I just want to say, and-
All right, learn.
And Counselor Gates is right. What we have done, we reported to council some time ago, we're currently in the throes of a development charges peer review. And what we're doing is exactly what Counselor Gates is suggesting, is that we're looking at other municipalities and looking at how they implement their development charges. And we'll be having a report back probably sometime in the fall of this year to have a further discussion on this, because there's different ways you can do it. This is the way this community does it in terms of including these charges in your development charges calculation. Other municipalities may approach it from a different perspective. They may have the developer pay upfront for certain things and include that in the cost of the land or the house that they sell to the consumer. So, there are different ways of doing it. We're out now doing this peer review. Mr. Holman will be reporting back on that in the fall, and we can have a discussion on whether we want to change the way we approach some of these as we go forward into our next development charges review.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and Mr. Beeman, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I was just going to mention the same report that Mr. Todd described, that we'll be addressing exactly the questions that Counselor Gates is putting before the council.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
What's the, what, this is pretty consistent in the region, the way this is handled at the present time, isn't it?
Well, some of it is and some of it isn't. Some municipalities deal with it in, in different ways. Some have area-specific charges, some don't have any charges. For example, some municipalities do not charge for individual infill lots where we do. There's just a number of things like that, that we felt it was a good time to explore kind of a best practices on how we do it.
at other municipalities and looking at how they implement their development charges. And we'll be having a report back probably sometime in the fall of this year to have a further discussion on this, because there's different ways you can do it, this is the way this community does it, in terms of including these charges in your development charges calculation. Other municipalities may approach it from a different perspective. They may have the developer pay upfront for certain things and include that in the cost of the land or the house that they sell to the consumer. So there are different ways of doing it. We're now doing this peer review, Mr. Holman will be reporting back on that in the fall, and we can have a discussion on whether we want to change the way we approach some of these as we go forward into our next development charges review.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and Mr. Beeman, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I was just going to mention the same report that Mr. Todd described, that we'll be addressing exactly the questions that Counselor Gates is putting before the council.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
What, this is pretty consistent in the region, the way this is handled at the present time, is it not?
Well, some of it is and some of it isn't, some municipalities deal with it in different ways. Some have area-specific charges, some don't have any charges. For example, some municipalities do not charge for individual infill lots where we do. There's just a number of things like that, that we felt it was a good time to explore kind of a best practices on how we do it. But in terms of the development, aim for development, that's common in most municipalities.
But there's no taxpayers' dollars involved in this. Even the interest on the loans that are done for two projects which were debated around this council pretty heavily for several years, the Kayla Road and Garner projects were long, extended, and overruns that put the development charges in jeopardy and precipitated capital lending as a result. But eventually, all of that comes back through the development charges, including interest.
That's correct.
Okay, so we are not, so if we didn't do this, if we didn't acquire this channel, all of the river realty development to the north and a lot of other properties to the east of that would be undevelopable.
That's correct.
Along with all of the Warren Creek and other developers in that particular area would also be stalemate.
That's correct.
Yeah, so what we're dealing with here is a tender for the construction of the channel to make all this happen. There's nothing sinister here, there's nothing underhanded, there's nothing wasting taxpayers' money. This is the way municipalities do business, and it's appropriate, the solicitor has indicated that, the CAO has indicated that, and because we acquired property to put this channel in, it's the way municipalities do business, and there's no hint of bonusing or anything else in this situation. So I want to make that crystal clear. When I hear comments that create the idea that something sinister or something inappropriate is being done, I'm not going to be a part of that, and I want to make it very clear what we are doing here, and it's a common practice to develop your municipality, and if you didn't do it, you would not have any development.
Counselor Carrion?
My question was answered by Mr. Todd about where the money comes from, that it's not on the taxpayers' back. I think people get, you know, people have a misconception when a counselor throws out a comment like that, that it's on the taxpayers' back. It comes out of the development charges. I don't know how long we have to do this before everyone understands that this is not on the taxpayers' back, but anyway. The other thing is, when you're doing these studies, or when you're asking around in the other communities, ask them how many are having the same type of development that we're having. The developers are flocking to our area because the system works. We're a little bit behind now, but that's because the economy is bad. But we're going to be poised to do a lot of development where many other communities are not, and this is common practice.
Okay, so we have.
I think I should respond particularly to Mr. Thompson's, Counselor Thompson's comments.
I'm going to respond too.
I actually am trying to say that I believe that developers should be paying for development. That's what I'm saying. So to your point, Mr. Thompson, and to Counselor Carrion, there's nothing wrong with that. And to say that you're going to get it out of development charges, there's some truth to that. But the problem is that you're going to get it over 10, 12, 13 years, because my, and somebody over there can correct me, but you're going to take an awful lot of development and a lot of houses paid, built, before you're going to come up with that kind of money to put back into, back into the system. So all I'm saying is that if a developer wants to come to Niagara Falls, he's already getting discounted development charges now, if he wants to develop his own land, he should take a serious look at paying for some of this stuff. That's kind of where I'm doing it. And you can argue that all you want, you can agree with what I'm saying or disagree, that's fair, I have no problem with that, but I think at some point in time, we have to sit down and say, whatever we're going to do, the developers are going to pay. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Counselor Peter Angelo, and Counselor Thompson?
Your worship, I just didn't understand the comment about discounted development charges.
No, I don't think, I don't know if, I don't think there's.
Mr. Mayor, I think what referring to is that when we did development charges review, if you recall, there was different levels. The development charge is not the full amount that we could have charged, council decided on a lesser amount. So I think that's what the council is referring to.
That's correct.
As a discount. We could have charged more, but you recall, we had delegations come into council and suggested that, you know, an increase sort of midway would be more reasonable, and that's ultimately what we ended up doing, so.
But it's still a full cost recovery?
Well, it's, well, it's, the fund, in terms of all of the projects that are in here now, it's not fully funded, but it's sort of a timing issue in terms of how those projects come on and when we recoup the money.
But eventually, all of the development charges, no, but that's what I'm getting at, eventually, all the development charges pay for the development, including the interest on the money.
Yes, we have a bit of a situation now where there, and Mr. Harrison will tell you, we have a bit of a cash flow issue, because you have to front the money for projects like this to open up the development, so that you'll now start getting building permits in and start replenishing that. So we do have some cash flow issues at times when we're putting, say, $2 million in the ground, and it might take us, you know, three or four or five years to recoup that back in building permit activity. So it's really more of a cash flow issue that we're talking about here.
Okay, so I think we've dealt with the issue, the bottom line is.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so we have a motion, a recommendation, rather, I need a motion to approve the recommendation. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrion. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, oh, you had a comment? Did you have a comment? Okay, one opposed, okay. And then item PD 201148, telecommunications facility consultation, Counselor Peter Angelo? Or Wayne, who brought that up?
I had asked for it.
Okay, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, there was just some, there was some correspondence from Mr. and Mrs. McCarthy in our handouts, and it wasn't made part of the report, but yet the report asked that we forward the correspondence on, and my only question was whether or not these three handouts were going to become part of the correspondence that we passed on.
Yes, everything we received will pass on to the Industry Canada, so they can ignore it.
Okay, we have a, Counselor Wayne?
I just wanted to, I guess, maybe add to the comments, I noticed in the executive summary that the relocation of the tower closer to the school is not supported by the representatives from St. Antoine School. It's my understanding that the City of Hamilton's tower and antenna protocol discourages construction within 120 meters of a residential zone or elementary or secondary school, and that Vancouver's school board somehow prohibits construction of cellular antenna within 305 meters of school property, and that also advised that Dr. Magda Havas, professor of environmental studies at Trent University, advises a buffer zone of 400 meters between cellphone towers and humans, and that children are more susceptible because they absorb energy differently than adults because of their differing tissue structures. So I just wanted to add those comments to what's already being said.
Okay. Okay, so we have a recommendation. You need to receive.
Move on second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Carrion, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, next up, we have a resolution. Regional Municipal, supports and application of regional municipality of Niagara for the residential conversion intensification loan program. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any discussion on the resolution? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Bylaws moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? unanimous?
He didn't ask me the question.
Sorry.
Bylaws 2011-92 to 2011-99 read a first time.
Okay.
Second and third, Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2011-92 to 2011-99 read a second and third time and passed.
Thank you. New business, Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I don't have new business, I was just wondering whether or not Paisley wanted to address the council, I wasn't sure if she was here for something or not. Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'd like to acknowledge former counselor Paisley Janary for being here tonight. Thank you for being here. New business, Counselor Inone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the decision of the audit committee. I sat through that whole hearing, and I want to say it was quite an educational experience. And I also want to congratulate Counselor Thompson, who is now the Chair of the Scotia Bank Center Committee, Scotia Convention Center Chair, and so I think it's a great job.
Is he going to raise with us?
He's pretty much running everything, I think. But what I wanted to raise was a question about, I spent yesterday all day at the Queenston Heights Park for the Niagara Parks Commission, and we had heat advisory, one of the hottest days of the year, you know, you pack your kids swim clothes and the swimmers, and I take my granddaughter to the pool, and there is probably maybe two feet around the little mushroom where the water comes down with this much water in the pool. The park was packed, there had to be 40, 50 little kids in this teeny tiny little sad excuse for a waiting pool. And I'm just kind of curious, are the Parks Commission so hard up now that they can't fill the entire pool with water, because every pavilion was local? I mean, people were talking pavilion to pavilion to pavilion, and there was no water for our kids to play in. So I'm just kind of curious what the problem is, is it broke?
So we'll ask Counselor Carrion why it was like the Serengeti during the dry season and all the animals.
It's just one of the bad public relations.
I did the research for you today.
Thank you.
Its nickname is the dribbling mushroom. That's what they call it.
The what?
The dribbling. Dribbling?
Dribbling what?
Dribbling, when you get older.
No, what was the second question?
As you get older, you'll understand, you'll understand as you get older.
It's the dribbling mushroom?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, and you know what kind of joke you'd like to make?
No, no, it's not a joke.
You know what, when we were kids, we went to, we went to Queenston Heights, the splash pad was full, I mean, come on, it's water, fix it, so that people who go there in a heat wave can use it.
I did the research, you let me answer. It's not a swimming pool, it is not a pool, no, it's not a waiting pool. The region, it hasn't been for a long time, since the region made it law to have an attendant at the pool, they stopped putting water in. It's just enough in there to keep the thing, it's not supposed to be for swimming, it's not for swimming. That's what the answer is.
It's for dribbling.
Dribbling. Counselor Morocco?
Well, I hate to go on and bore yous any longer, but I have to tie in sorry for my inability to speak, which is probably a good thing tonight, but just when you think things couldn't get any worse at the Greater Niagara General Hospital, which I have to say, I'm probably one of the biggest supporters for a number of years, is that the story is that a man and woman pull up in the parking lot to try and get someone at the hospital to come out and take the patient who's basically unconscious into the hospital, and is told, no, go get an ambulance.
In the parking lot?
In the parking lot of the hospital, and said, no, I think my wife is unconscious and she's had some heart problems. And they basically said, sorry, but we don't have anyone to come out and get her and bring her in. So they said, call an ambulance. So he said, fine, he did. That was for me.
So the agent wanted to get you out of the parking lot?
So he's on, he's on the phone to, sorry, he's on the phone to the dispatch, and dispatch said, you're where? I'm in the parking lot of the Greater Niagara General Hospital. My wife is somewhat unconscious because she has breathing problems. So he said, you really got to be kidding me, and nobody will come out to get her? He said, no. Okay, so keep talking to her, is she conscious? I have to say, because I have a swollen throat and I have asthma, so I had an attack and the heat didn't help, and I'm sure that there's probably a lot of other people, when you speak of heat, they'll be subject to that. But it just, I just cannot, I cannot understand that here you are at the emergency doors, you go in, I don't care, we didn't say who we were, I didn't want to say who it was, but, you know, it doesn't matter, you can't go out and bring the patient. What if the patient actually went into cardiac arrest and died? Who's responsible? I have to say, once I got inside, I was very well taken care of, and I thanked the staff there, but, you know, that process is just not acceptable, to think that somebody pulls up and asks them to come out and get whoever it is out of their vehicle, and are told, no, call an ambulance. No wonder our frickin' healthcare is in such a frickin' mess, sorry.
Yes. Counselor Inone?
You know, you read those stories in US papers and you think that can never happen here. It's happening here, down the street, it's happening here. Have we got a meeting set with Deb Matthews for AMO? Have they responded at all? Because we would really love another go at Deb Matthews.
Ross, the clerk, the comment?
No, that process is just finished, in fact, we submitted those, today's the deadline, they've been submitted, I expect to hear within the next week or so. But obviously, Minister Matthews was one of the ones that we requested. And as you know, Counselor Inone, we get a response back from the Ministry's office, whether they're taking appointments or having sessions at AMO or not. I know in the past, she has granted time with this council, hopefully she will again for this conference.
I think that's pretty sad too, someone that's been actively involved in the foundation and a member of council that took that.
It doesn't matter who you are.
I know, it's sad.
It doesn't matter whether it's any of us or anybody sitting at home, it's unacceptable. Whoever answered that call and told her husband to call an ambulance should be fired. Like, I don't care who you are, you should be fired, do you not have a protocol? If Deb Matthews doesn't understand, somebody needs to ship this tape to her. If you don't get it, there's something wrong with you. You need to have your butt bounced from MPP and get the heck out of office, but somebody needs to help us down here.
And Carolyn, just to let you know, no, he went inside and asked, he didn't call, we were in the parking lot, he went inside the hospital and asked someone to please come out and get my wife, and they said, we can't, get her in a wheelchair, he said she's unconscious, I think she's barely breathing. So they said, call an ambulance.
That's disgusting.
It doesn't matter who it is, they didn't know, and it doesn't matter, it's not the point, it's just not acceptable, that, it just.
Well, that's why we're saying, we're begging the province, bring in an investigator. This system, Deb Matthews last summer admitted to us, it's broken in Niagara, now the national media are covering that it's broken here, what are they waiting for?
Someone to die.
Well, it's happened already, you know.
And to that note, Mr. Mayor, we've been refused by a Minister of Health because I've been too mouthy, standing around this table, if you remember Mr. Kaplan. I would be interested to see how Deb Matthews is going to deal with us now after the NHS rally, because it's just another excuse for her to say they're troublemakers, well, we're not troublemakers, somebody's going to die.
Counselor Maves?
My old times have changed. My wife was a registered nurse back in the 60s, I recall she delivered a baby in the parking lot at the hospital. And I don't think, I think it's the whole system, right from the employees, right to the top, right to the bottom, and I think something has to change in their training, their attitudes, everything else, and I think that, I guess, you have to start at the top, but I mean, why can't we get back to those old values that we had, where people, all you had to do, they're sick, take care of them. And I don't know why, and it's just, not just the very top, it's the very, the people that are working there, and they have to know a little bit better, when somebody's out in your parking lot and you say, get an ambulance, that's ridiculous. Something's got to be dealt with in that situation.
That's what happens, you know, after, well, and after amalgamation, people don't take as much ownership, right? Where before, there was the pride of ownership, and now we've just been averaged out. Counselor Inone, Counselor Thompson?
That's why at that NHS rally, we needed 2,000 people, I'm very thankful for the 200 that came out, but we need 2,000 people to come out and say, not acceptable. We need more, it can, it's got to stop being just us and the yellow shirts, you need everybody to come out and say, this has got to stop, because until it affects your house, you don't, you don't do it.
That's right. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this story to the hospital and at least get a response back. I find that beyond belief, and I'd like to know what they have to say about it.
Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrion. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
It's to Deb Matthews too.
Yeah, that's unacceptable. Is there any other new business? If not, the motion for adjournment, Counselor Inone, seconded by Counselor Maves.